I want to welcome everyone to the Pittsburgh Planning Board. This is the Community Development Block Grant Public Hearing this evening. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to gather comments from year 50 Community Development Block Grant applicants who want to speak about their existing programs or changes to their programs, first-time applicants who want to speak about their proposal, and the general public who wish to identify community needs. This year, 30 CDBG proposals were received by the Planning Board totaling approximately $1.7 million in requests. It is estimated that there is approximately $916,000 in year 50 funds will be available. Wow, year 50. The schedule for the block grants: The Planning Board will meet on January 23rd, that's our regular meeting, to discuss the year 50 proposals. We will then submit our recommendations for funding to Mayor Squalia. The mayor will review our funding recommendations and submit her recommendations to the City Council. The council will review the CDBG recommendations beginning on February 20th. The City Council's Finance Committee will make their recommendations February 28th, and the full City Council will vote on March 5th. The proposed consolidated plan and statement of CDBG activities will be published on March 20th, 2024. Public comments will be received up to the date of the second public hearing, which is scheduled for April 23rd. We anticipate local approval of year 50 CDBG action plan in May, at which time the city's year 50 application will be submitted to HUD for approval. The program year officially begins on July 1st, 2024. Liz Murphy, Executive Director of the Community Development and Planning Department, will now say a few words about the CDBG regulations. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you. Sorry, I can't, I don't want to see everybody, but I can't. I'm sorry, I'm going to have my back to you because I don't know how to do this and then also reach the microphone. In addition to the summary of year 50 proposals, the handouts include a list of eligible activities and national objectives. Eligible activities cover a wide range of services, public facility improvements, public services, which are capped at 15% of the entitlement amount, demolition, economic development, rehab and preservation, and planning administration, which is capped at 20% of the entitlement amount. Besides meeting the eligibility criteria, the proposed activity must address one of three national objectives. An activity must either benefit persons of low and moderate income, or aid in the prevention of eliminations of slum and blight, or meet other community development needs which have a particular urgency because existing conditions pose a serious and immediate threat to the health or welfare of the community where other financial resources are not available to meet such needs. Good example of that might be a health pandemic. As an entitlement city, which the criteria is based on the age of housing, growth lag, and poverty rate, under the CDBG program, it's our responsibility to ensure and to document that at least 70% of the block grant funds are used to benefit low and moderate income persons over a three-year period. Low to moderate income is defined as earning 80% or less of the median income and/or an activity is located in a census tract where at least 51% of the beneficiaries are of low, moderate income, and all of the residents within that given area would benefit from the activity. So like a park is a good example of that. Records regarding income limits, as well as local policies and procedures of the CDBG program, are available at the Community Development Department Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30 p.m. As Paula Karen stated, we welcome comments on specific proposals, as well as overall housing and community development needs within Pittsburgh and all other HUD-funded initiatives, such as our home program, which funds housing activities throughout the city. Forms are available tonight in English and in Spanish if anyone would like to fill out a public comment form or notice of intent. This form is included in the consolidated plan, as well as CDBG projects, and helps guide to inform our planning efforts moving forward. If you would like to obtain copies of these forms, or have particular questions about the program, please see Maribel Cruz regarding housing and development needs, and Kimberly LeBlanc regarding any CDBG activity needs. I'd like to give a special thank you to Maribel Cruz, the Housing and Development Director with the city's Community Development and Planning Department, who will provide Spanish interpretation services. Please let us know if anyone needs assistance. I apologize in advance. Si necesita servicios de interpretación en español. Por favor, habla con Maribel. I will now turn the meeting back over to Paula Karen.
All right. So I'll say, "Next step." At this time, I would like to open the meeting for public comments. If anyone did not receive a summary of the year 50 proposals, the summary is available in the handout section. Do we have any? I think we do have a few extra handouts.
Yeah, there's extras all around me, if anyone needs any.
And I do apologize, they were only one-sided for some reason, so even though I hit two, you may only have half of them, so I can get another copy if anyone needs one.
Please limit your comments to under five minutes, so everyone has a chance to speak. Please mute your microphone when you are not presenting or asking questions, and I thank you. And can do this, it's like, when you come up, you can come up either to the podium or come up to the table, and just in front of the microphone, and then just state your name.
Paula, just out of curiosity, because we usually do this differently, we usually do public comment, don't we do public comment with each one?
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to do them, because you asked for public comment, so I thought everyone was just going to rush to the podium.
I am.
Okay. So we're going to do them after each one?
Exactly. I'm going to announce each one in order that they're presented in the summary, so you can see how long you're going to be here for that. There's a prediction.
I apologize, Paula. If anybody has any questions on, virtually as well, please feel free to raise your hand, and I'm going to try my best to catch you when your hands go up.
And also for those folks looking remotely, we're going to also try to put the summary up, so they'll see the summary. So the first application this evening is sponsored by the Department of Public Works. It's ADA crosswalk improvements on Electric Ave in Deerfield Road, and I think that was by Nick Erickson. He's online.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, excellent. Thanks for allowing us to present on this. So the application that we submitted was for an ADA-compliant crosswalk on Electric Ave at Old Deerfield Road. So this would include the crosswalk itself, ADA-compliant sidewalk ramps on both ends, and then RRFBs, which are those flashing beacons to provide additional safety for pedestrians crossing the road. So we anticipate this is going to cost approximately $75,000. So we're asking for $50,000 from CDBG, with a cash match from Chapter 90 of $25,000. And if the project comes in under budget, what we'd like to do is also make some asphalt repairs to the loop trail that goes around Forest Hill Cemetery. It's fallen into somewhat disrepair in a few areas, and we'd like to take care of those issues.
Would that also include like the barricades that are broken, of that nature, along the roadway, the fencing?
Yep, fixing the fencing. That wasn't specifically outlined in the grant application, but we'd be happy to work those into the scope of work. The goal here, too, is to have a contractor complete this work. The DPW staff themselves have a backlog of existing CDBG work that I'd rather get completed first before we assign any additional CDBG work to them. So the goal here would be to assign this work in full to a contractor and get that work done sometime in late 2024.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you. Happy to answer any questions, too.
Does any board member have any questions regarding this application at this time?
I have one question. Why would we, why would, so close to the Mount Neillam Crosswalk and Beacon?
So we actually had a resident that lives on Old Deerfield Road, that little neighborhood right there, that submitted a petition to City Council to construct an ADA crosswalk in this exact location, and that petition was approved, and we haven't moved forward with actual construction yet, just due to simply lack of funding. So this CDBG grant application would be satisfying the petition that was approved by City Council, and it would serve to allow any residents in that Old Deerfield Road neighborhood to cross Electric Ave and access that loop trail that goes around Forest Hill Cemetery. And this particular constituent has a disabled child that frequently goes on walks and needs to cross Electric Ave at that location. I believe the child is deaf and/or blind. I forget which it is, to be honest. My apologies for that, but the CDBG grant would specifically be targeting completion of that petition.
Okay. Well, the background about the petition was helpful.
The only question that I have that is kind of, I guess, piggybacking on what Tracy said, it being so comparatively close to Mount Neillam Road and even Rollstone, it's not, and I suppose it might be an unfair question to ask of the chief right now, but is it, are they too close to each other? Is it a safety issue? It seems like it would be.
Wish I could answer that. A lot of subject matter expert when it comes to crosswalk and the manual on traffic safety.
So we'll have to, as part of this, we'll, you know, either I'll reach out, or we'll have staff reach out to Sergeant Boudreaux.
Well, could also, I'm sure they-
If you don't mind, I can tell you, one of the issues was, there's no sidewalk between Old Deerfield and Mount Neillam Road. So for any of the residents on Old Deerfield that want to access that crosswalk, they're actually walking in the roadway on, on-
It's a good perspective, and it's whether or not the cost of the sidewalk exceeds, like putting a sidewalk all the way down to that intersection exceeds the cost of the basements.
I would defer to the commissioner on that question.
But I'm sure they probably looked into the best way to mitigate the situation. And this is what the proposal is in front of us.
We have, and that stretches sidewalk is significantly more expensive to construct than the ADA crosswalk in this location.
Okay.
Did you have a conversation with Traffic, Nick?
Sergeant Boudreaux actually attended the Public Works Committee meeting at which this was discussed. And we talked about this, and he was on board at the time, so we could have an updated conversation with him, certainly. And just for everyone's awareness, you know, you could vote to not approve CDBG funding for this project, but the DPW would still have to construct it, because it's a petition that's been approved by City.
Yep, understood.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And part of just that safety aspect of it, is, because I also travel Mount Neillam Road, but I also noticed those beacons somehow just keep getting hit. Fair reason. I'm not sure, like, why, but they do.
Did they get hit again? So-
Not in the recent, I haven't, in the past few weeks, no, I haven't tried, I have not traveled there, but I'm just, I just might recall, it's been, I've seen it like twice, so.
So the day after we had them installed, a car hit the one on the Mount Neillam side and took it out. And then we used a company called Munitec to assist us with repairs due to motor vehicle accidents, and it took them a couple months to work through the insurance claims process and get a new one installed. I haven't been over that way and paid attention to that specific beacon in a while. I hope it didn't get taken out again, but I'll double check tomorrow to make sure.
Well, that was just on the safety of just, you know, what's the attractiveness and why it keeps getting hit that way? You don't want anybody there when that occurs, so it's just, you know, I'm not sure what other deterrent there is, or what other safety measure in order to, you know, prevent it from happening, but.
Yeah.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to comment, has a proposal, Mr. Counselor Boishman? If you want to, could you come to the, if you come to the podium, then everybody can hear you.
Well, the audience, that's virtual, if there's anyone, they can't hear people if they speak.
My name's Paul Boishman, I live in Pittsburgh, I'm the City Council, and I do walk up there at Forest Hill Cemetery, and Nick's absolutely right, the sidewalks, it's verbal, they're all uneven and everything else, and that's number one. Number two, Nick's right on the petition, we passed that for the lady, because she does have a handicapped child, and if you stood there, when you tried to cross the street, you cannot cross the street.
It's busy.
It takes forever to cross that street, because everybody's in a hurry, so nobody wants to stop. So I'm all in favor of this, you won't hear me giving anybody a hard time, I think it's a very good petition, but I just want to make sure that it will be done in year 2024, if you guys accept this. That's what I want to make sure, I don't want to wait 10 years.
It would have to be done in the CDBG cycle, which is July 1st of '24 to June 30th of '25, right?
When it's a city project?
No, if we approve this funding, it would have to be done in year 50, which-
It cannot happen before July 30th.
And it can't happen after July, June 30th.
Well, it can happen after.
Oh, okay. Okay.
We have to be careful, because we have timeliness requirements to spend the money that we have to pay attention to, but a small amount of money, I could carry it over.
So the council's saying, what are the chances that it would take longer than '24 and early '25?
Well, I think we would want to ask, DPW would be doing this, not us, so I think we would need to hear that.
Well, no, go ahead.
Contract.
Yeah, our plan would be to use a contractor to make sure that it is done timely, just because we have such a big backlog of existing DPW/CDBG projects, and with the few staff resources we have, if we get a couple of bad weather events in a row, that takes up weeks and even months at a time, sometimes, of our efforts. So projects continually get backburnered, and it's not an efficient way to get things done, so we're trying to come up with different strategies to make that better.
At least this, you know, if this funding is approved, this would definitely push it on its way.
Oh, good. As long as it's just done for an eight-year period of time.
Well, after we approve it, you'll have to talk to Community Development and DPW.
I don't think they want me to.
Just telling you who to talk to, Paula.
All right, thank you.
Again, so back to, like, the CDBG, this is, it is a mayor's program, so a lot of it's also contingent upon administrative priorities and aspects, too, in this, when we're reviewing the proposals.
That one might be, too, I don't know.
The second proposal is an ADA crosswalk improvements on John Fitch Highway in Pearl Street. This is also by Department of Public Works, in the amount of $100,000 request. Nick?
Thank you very much. Again, thank you for allowing us to present on this project for you. So the application we submitted for John Fitch Highway in Pearl Street is for six ADA crossings in the vicinity of Coolidge Park. I don't know if anyone is familiar with John Fitch Highway along that stretch out in front of Coolidge, but there's five existing crosswalks that the city really is by law not allowed to repaint, because they're not ADA-compliant. So the goal here with this project would be to install ADA ramps on both ends of each of those crosswalks to make them ADA-compliant, and that way we would be able to repaint these crosswalks. So this would allow better access across John Fitch Highway to Coolidge Park, and this also is the result of a petition that worked its way through City Council and was approved. We have a residential development on the western side of John Fitch Highway there, so there's the Bella Vista condominiums, and there's the Gables, so residents from both of those residential housing developments would have a better time crossing John Fitch Highway to get over to the park. And then the sixth crosswalk is actually on Pearl Street, just around the corner, over near the main entrance to where the pool facility is. So it would also be adding ADA ramps to this crosswalk, so that we could repaint it, and it would be ADA-compliant. None of these six crosswalks include the RRFBs, like I included in the previous grant application for Electric Ave, but in this case, you know, we're trying to be mindful of cost in relation to the overall scope of work. So again, we're asking for CDBG funding in the amount of $100,000, with a $25,000 cash match through Chapter 90. So essentially, we're allocating, you know, roughly, roughly a little less than $25,000 per crosswalk to get this work done.
So this isn't part of the Future Mass Works project on John Fitch? This would be like the lower half of John Fitch Highway?
Correct. So right now, we're working on the section of John Fitch Highway between Lunenburg Street and Summer Street, with Mass DOT through their State Transportation Improvement Program to design and construct full roadway reconstruction there, including sidewalks and the whole nine yards. So this is outside of that project area. And then further up on John Fitch Highway near North Street, we're working on the design of a new intersection configuration for John Fitch at North and Pearl Hill Road. That one doesn't have construction funding in place right now, but the design is in the, like, roughly 25% complete phase.
Thank you.
When you're ready, Peter, has his hand raised?
Go ahead, Peter, question? You're on mute, Peter. There you go.
How's that?
There you go, much of it.
Nick, just a quick question. With these three crosswalks that are coming off John Fitch Highway to Coolidge Park, would the work on those crosswalks be done by the Department of Public Works, or would they be contracted out?
This is another one that I included as a contractor project, so we would contract out the work. Again, same thing applies as the previous application. Our current DPW workload, specifically with CDBG projects, is pretty backlogged, so I'd rather farm this out to a contractor, so that the work can be done in a more timely fashion.
Does DPW would also-
No problem at all, thank you.
Go ahead. Would DPW also be contributing, like, is the $100,000 enough to do the work, or that's just part of the work?
I believe it's going to require a little bit more than $100,000, and I'm willing to match the balance, I guess, the difference between CDBG funding and the actual cost with Chapter 90 funding.
All right.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you. Is anybody else in the audience, comment, question regarding this application?
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
I'm James Muller, Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Pittsburgh. I just wanted to offer my support to this project, especially where it's located next to one of the largest parks in the city. Those crosswalks are definitely needed, especially to the point where there's a lot of things that are going on at Coolidge Park, a lot more rejuvenation of the park, that's going to provide a lot more activity. So having those crosswalks there will be able to help ease the access to the parks and to the wonderful things that'll be happening there. So I just wanted to lend my support. Thank you.
Well, stay right there, because you're up next, it looks like. Parks and Recreation Department.
I'll stay right here, because I'm up next.
There you go. So our next, if there's any further questions on that other last application, okay. We have City Parks sign replacement by the Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of $12,000 to create uniformity and provide names and location of the parks in the city.
So last year, I came to you, two months of being on the job, and then put together a few different projects. One of them was to create uniformity with the rules and regulations for all, for the parks that fall in the area for CBDG. This is somewhat of a continuation of it. We have a lot of, just like the rules and regulations signs, we have a lot of the park, just general signs, whether it's the name of the park, at some of them, that are washed out, destroyed, chipped, barely readable, or some parks that don't even have any signs at all to designate what they are. This is just an ongoing continuation to start replacing those signs as well, so people can easily identify where they're at, what the park, you know, what park they're enjoying. So, yeah.
Okay. I like uniformity, I like improvements to wayfinding, it's going to be helpful. Is there, are there questions or comments from any of the board members?
The, what you intended to do last year has been done?
Not yet. So it took a little bit of digging, the last time the parks' rules were updated was 2002. So some of the language and wording, and even some of the, when I say items, that were in the rules and regulations, either no longer exist, or are no longer used, so it needs to be updated. So we've been, I've been going through and trying to pick out what rules are going to be put on the signs, and a way to, whether it's via a QR code, or something else on the sign, to get the additional list of rules. I want to, you know, hit the main ones, but also allow people to go on and see the full extent. I mean, to put, let's just say, 50 rules this big on the sign, it's going to be a waste of time and money, so I want to make sure that I put home the ones that need to be hit home, and people have access to the rest. So in the process of putting that together and designing it, that will be done and installed by mid to late spring.
Thank you. Next year, on this part of this project.
This spring.
This spring.
He just means the rules.
Oh, the rules.
The rules. The other one-
Which will go on the side.
Got it. All right. Any questions from board members?
I do have one.
Okay.
Just a quick question for you. Would these signs on the parks be for every park in the city?
No, they're only for the parks that fall under the-
Census tracts that are CDG eligible.
The census tract that are CDG eligible.
There you go. So you would be using, like, other funds in order to, for the other parks-
Correct.
To still keep it uniform, it's not just, these all, not all those are just going to be the same, the idea is that all the parks will eventually have it. These can, though, be funded potentially from this fund.
Yes.
Get it. Makes sense.
If I could, one more, just a quick question.
Go ahead, Peter.
My only reason for mentioning that is I really like the idea of having uniformity throughout the city for all the parks, and if that were going to happen, it'd be kind of nice to have one for our smallest park in the city, which of course is?
Oh, I'm sure it's the Boulder.
Litchfield Park. Litchfield Park in the Upper Common.
Ah, there you go. I didn't even know it, so that's the Boulder, right, Pete?
That's the smallest park in the city.
I didn't know it had a different, I didn't know it had a name, I didn't even know that.
Oh, yeah. That's why we need a sign.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pete.
So this next application, stay right there. Outdoor fitness center and outdoor fitness studio installation by the Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of $20,000, a fitness court.
So, yes, number two. So that, last year, I came to you requesting $75,000 for the National Fitness Campaign Outdoor Fitness Park. We are still going to be one of two in Central Mass to have the fitness court, we're going to be the only one in Central Mass to have both sides. This was all set and ready to go until we had a lot of rain this past summer, which originally the DPW was going to install the footprint, the cement court footprint for the park. Unfortunately, with all the rain, that there was more important things and more pressing things that needed to be accomplished, so that got pushed back to the backburner, as Commissioner Erickson had stated with some other CDB projects. So that still needs to be done, and with still the backlog of CBDG, DPW is no longer able to do that. So I'm requesting money to help accomplish getting that footprint installed, so that we can finish the rest of that project. We already have the entire fitness park, all the equipment, it's at the DPW right now. It's ready to go, and just that, when that footprint gets installed, it needs a month of cure, and the people can come in, set everything up, and it's going to be ready to use.
Are there restrooms in part of the installation?
No, this is just, so picture the size of like a tennis court, that's what this is. It's an outdoor fitness court. So the only restroom facilities that we have in our parks is at Park Hill and at Coolidge, when the swimming pool is open, and when the splash pad is open, or, and at Cog's also, when that park is open, but none of the other parks have year-round restroom facilities.
Yeah, I just wanted to put that back on the radar, particularly for Coolidge Park. It's against such heavy usage, and with everything down there, by the children's park, and that, we keep pushing a lot, there's a lot of recreation occurring there that we need indoor plumbing, even if it's seasonally, but aside from, you know, just when the pool's open, there's definitely a need.
I don't disagree.
So just like to see that being funded at some, you know, at some point as part of the master plan, so just take that opportunity and give that a plug, because it's like we're doing all this here, and exercise and equipment, you're drinking water, you don't want it to run out to. There you go.
You're a valid point, I do understand. That's a valid point. I do understand.
Like that. Anybody? Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you guys very much again.
Not for you. I was waiting, I was waiting to finish that. As a note, before we move to the next one, Kim or Liz, can you do me and the rest of the board a favor and come up with a list of backlog projects that have been funded through CDBG that aren't complete? Because it sounds like there's quite a few of them. So I want to kind of see how many, you know, what we're behind on and why we're so far behind on them.
Can I generally speak to that?
Yeah, please.
You might just want to sit on the corner. I think you should just stay.
I mean, quite honestly, you can sit up here. That way you can face everyone.
You can too.
If you want.
Although I'll be talking about a number of projects soon.
No problem. Just offering.
So we've actually been having that conversation. We met with James from Parks and Amy, our senior project planner and manager and DPW, before applications were submitted to go through that. Now, I don't have a list in front of me, but we were very much cognizant of that. And so what you see is not too many applications from DPW and Parks. And those that have been submitted are using contractors to do the work instead of DPW. But we'll absolutely get you that list.
Yeah.
Because I understand the concern.
Yeah, and I obviously, I know that's, I know that's been a longstanding problem. The, I think everyone has said for the last few years, we were pushing a lot on DPW and it's obviously no fault of anyone's. But we need to figure out if we have funds that are so backlogged that, that we are either going to lose them or have to, I doubt we could even reprogram them if we don't spend them, or maybe.
We could reprogram them.
Yeah.
And that's what we would need to do if we were going to.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask you again?
Yeah, as long as you come up.
Yep, yes.
In meeting with Liz and the community development team and Commissioner Erickson, a couple of the projects were done before I inherited the position. So I was basically getting caught up on what those projects are. And they're in the works actually to, if our snow melts, then I can get my department, my Parks crew, working on those things because it's now a little bit of a slower part. If they're not out, snow, clearing the snow, then I can have them start tackling some of the backlog projects that.
Great.
Were on the books before I got here.
Great. Thank you.
Liz, stay right there.
Yes.
Community development. Mama Fitz Park and Park Hill Park. In the amount of request of $100,000, last year's award was $75,000. So it was previously awarded, it looks like, in a mount?
So in both cases, so we're, this is to augment existing funds that are not just CDBG funds, but also quite a bit of ARPA money in the case of Mama Fitz Park. Those two projects, we had cost estimates. The costs, the equipment costs in particular, but also construction, came in much higher than we expected, particularly in Mama Fitz, where there's a lot more work done. So we had, in order to move forward with, or plans to move forward with the Mama Fitz Park, we had to really scale back that construction. So this is an attempt to bring it back to what the project was supposed to be, including the play equipment and the basketball court, which is what we had really said, we're not going to even be able to touch that basketball court if we don't receive additional funding to complete the project. So, and then in the case of Park Hill, it's for the play equipment. So we just, we just want to finish what we started.
So this is, would be like a mix of CDBG and ARPA funds in order to complete this?
Correct. CDBG and ARPA.
And Mama Fitz is North Street, correct?
Correct. So Mama Fitz is in an environmental justice neighborhood. Park Hill Park is not technically in it, but it is serving the Lower Clayhorn area, which is an environmental justice neighborhood. And really is the only park in that area that serves that community.
All right. Is there any board members have questions?
What's to be done at the Park Hill? Replacing the play equipment, the able-bodied play equipment. We already added a new fully-accessible area of play equipment, but there's, was an existing playground there. That, that equipment is quite old now.
There we go. There you go. What about the baseball field at Park Hill?
That is not a part of the scope of work.
I was curious.
Well, I was just curious because, you know, my son played baseball there and it was terrible. Like, and I mean, he's in high school now, but I just, I mean, it's a nice place, you know, nice field if it was, you know, kept up.
So as we talked about the backlog projects, this was under, one or two of them was a Park Hill Phase 1 and Phase 2 to fix, to do improvements at the skate park. I want to say the BMX area and to help fix and repair the baseball field. So that is the earlier, as I referred to, if the snow's gone.
Okay.
The plan is to redo the entire infield, put a new mound, a new home plate in. So if there's no snow there, my guys can get working on cutting out the infield again and putting new infield mix down, fixing the mound and fixing the batter's box. If there is more that I can do within the scope of that grant, like maybe repair the dugouts, add some fence toppers or things like that to help repair that baseball field, that is the intent, to hopefully allow Babe Ruth and the JV teams at the high school to have another field to use. The other field, the softball field of that smaller field, which is basically built below the water table, that doesn't drain at all, that is actually going to be in the works to be removed. And I'm working with DCR on creating not only a trail around the entire perimeter of Park Hill, but that particular area is also going to have some type of nature slash something or other in that area. Park Hill is undergoing a lot, hopefully with the addition of the playground piece, but there's also a couple of other grants replacing the trees. If anybody's driven by, you might notice that the whole entire perimeter fence of Park Hill that was all mangled, bent, rusted, that has been removed. And it's going to be now outlined with trees that are appropriate for that specific location, working with foresters and DCR to make sure. I know people might be nervous near the power lines and things like that, but there are trees that are particular for that area, along with cutting out the brush and stuff like that to open up the wonderful old bridges that are very beautiful. So that park is also going under, undergoing a lot of.
Thank you.
Work.
Excellent.
Thanks, James.
Glad to hear. We don't get to hear all the time about all the good things going on, you know? So many good things. The next application, community development, public art sculpture walk, the amount of $36,000.
Yes. So this actually came about through the Pittsburgh Cultural Council. The chair, Tamar at the time, had brought in an individual from the New England Sculpture Association who has a program where they will basically loan sculptures from artists that are participants in that association for periods of time, like a year, two years, to have exhibits. The, if we were able to move forward with this project, we'd be, we would hope to do a call for sculpture art. That would be between five and six sculptures, or four and six, depending on how it all played out, to either use the, to either put those sculptures on the stretch of Main Street where the sidewalks are extremely wide, which is really in front of the theater block and in front of Darius. Those are really our widest sidewalk areas where we could still have enough space for the public to walk around. Or in Riverfront Park, around the periphery of the park, and we would do an exhibit. That would be a two-year exhibit. The funds would be used for the, creating the bases that these sculptures would sit on, the installation of those bases, and a stipend for the artists to get the space, the sculpture there. And then after two years, what we would be doing is looking to give those back and hopefully get something new. The idea is that this would fit with the work that we're doing to brand the city as an arts and culture destination. And particularly if we did a sculpture walk right up here on Main Street, then it could also be part of our, the cultural district that we hope to develop and get approved by Mass Cultural Council.
So once these, like the pads and aspects are established, they'll be there for future use. There'll be less cost in the future to.
Correct.
Installations.
Although I will say, every sculpture is different in shape and size. So some modifications of pads could potentially be made depending on what the sculptures are. So there would be a whole formal process that New England Sculpture Association would help us work through to do that call for art and review all those proposed sculptures. And, you know, it's, it would be, I think it's an exciting project. I know it's, it would, it would fall into our public facilities to be public facility park project.
Okay. Thank you. Is, are there any questions from any board members regarding the proposal? And any questions or comments from the public regarding this proposal? All right. Next proposal. We also have community development and its streetscapes. Amount requested is $100,000.
So the, these funds would primarily go to supporting the development of the Twin Cities Rail Trail Connector, which connects Phase 1 to the future Phase 2. So Phase 1 of the trail ends at Fifth Street, I believe, right around Fifth Street. And, and so it goes just past the, it goes just past Fifth Street, ends there. And there isn't really a way for it to continue on the tracks there. It has to go through, I believe, Middle Street. And then it would connect to First Street. And then Phase 2 is an overpass bridge that would go from First Street over the river, over the train tracks and land in, in the air, actually, and go over some other properties and land in an area that is where the commuter rail parking is right now at the intermodal station. So that would connect basically the Mark Garage downtown to the rest of the rail trail.
That's really neat. It's really necessary to have that end, to have that end.
It really is, yeah. Otherwise, it feels like it doesn't really end properly.
Everybody's parking on waters, you know, at the water, at the, somebody's business in order to access the trail.
Yeah. And I suppose theoretically, you could take the train, you could, you could come from Lemonster, downtown Lemonster, you could walk it. And then if you wanted to, you could take the train back to Lemonster. I don't know if people would do that, but...
It's one way to get around.
It's sometimes, it's like, you know, one way's not always bad.
You're tired after five miles, right?
Like when there's something at the destination.
Right.
All right. So are there any board member questions regarding this application?
All right. I have, I do have one question, if you don't mind, on the last petition.
Go ahead.
I tried to, this is for Liz.
Yes.
Liz, these sculpt, of course, I'm all for public artwork and I'd love to see these come to the city. Is there a two-year limit on this? Once they're exchanged out one time and the city gets five or six new sculptures, is that pretty much the end of the program?
We would hope to continue the program and continue to cycle additional sculptures through. That would be, that's part of the strategy is, is, you know, how many times does somebody want to come back and see the same sculpture? You really need to recycle that to continue to have that tourism engagement.
So there's the option of continuing the program and just have it keep going?
Correct. That, yeah, that would be our, our intent, to keep it going.
Okay, great. Sorry, sorry for the late question.
Okay.
I apologize if I missed your hand, Peter.
No, no problem.
Is there anybody else who has any public comment, either regarding the last one about the sculpture or about the streetscape proposal about the Twin Cities Rail Trail?
We do have a hand raised.
Okay.
Susan, you can speak whenever you'd like. You just gotta un, there you go.
You can hear me? Yeah, it was, I, I also wanted to speak to the, to the sculpture park. I've been a tourist in other communities where we've specifically sought out sculpture walks like that. So I know that they do work, at least with some audience. And I think that the locations that you're talking about are absolutely terrific, that those are areas that could, that have that space. And I think it's a great way to connect the things near Darius and stuff up towards, closer towards the Upper Common. So I just wanted to add my support. And the Historical Society did write a letter of support for some of the funding for that program.
Great. Thank you for your comments.
One more comment, if you don't mind?
Go ahead, Peter.
This is directed towards Liz. Liz, keep in mind, I'm not sure aware of this, the sidewalk across from the Boulder is extremely wide and oversized. So always keep that in the back of your mind when you're talking sculptures. Love to see one in the Upper Common.
Will do.
All right. Our next application this evening is Jopano's Drive Repaving Project by the Community Health Connections, Inc., in the amount of $150,000. Do we have anybody in the audience here or online for this project?
Kim, do you know if it would be, I have four virtual, obviously I know it's not Susan, but there's three other people. I don't know who they are, so.
Oh, on the, on the...
Yeah, you'd have to come look or pull it up on your computer. But if you want to look over my shoulder, you can come over here and see if it's someone you.
I have him right there.
Again, so the project proposal before us tonight?
No, I think those are constituents. I don't.
Is Jopano's Drive Repaving Project?
Speaking for the farmer's market.
Yeah, growing places. Yeah, I remember, I think I remember that one.
Do you see anybody online for the Community Health Connections?
No, I don't believe so.
Not for that one, no.
All right. Next proposal is the Phoenix Building entrances and...
Can we, since this is a public hearing, can we have a very brief conversation about that, since we, since I know all the history there is to know about that? For, for the general public, the, when Community Health Connections was permitted in 2008, I believe, or 2010, we, one of the permit conditions that was suggested by CHC and added to the permit was that once it's constructed, that they repaved Jopano's Drive, where obviously a decade plus since that happened, there was obviously funding issues when it was built. It was over budget. There were other issues. Kind of fell to the wayside. This past fall, and Nick, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this past fall, over the last year, last summer, last fall, we got back on track with them. What I thought was a commitment to pave Jopano's Drive that I had heard, and I just checked, I have a note in my calendar for March 30th, to, to, to meet in April at some point for a pre-paving meeting because it's supposed to happen in the spring. So I assume that this is a just, they, obviously they hope to get the money, but I think either way, it's getting paved. That's, and Nick, unless you know otherwise, that's to the best of my knowledge, that they have committed to doing that.
Yeah, Nick's not on there.
That's fine. And I don't need to put him on the spot anyway, even if he was.
And just also, this is a private road. It's a private way. This is the why it's come up. And it's part of the access to CHC improvement.
Thank you, Paul.
Welcome. And the next proposal is the Phoenix Building entrances and historic facades by the Pittsburgh Historical Society in the amount of $6,250. That's pretty specific.
Susan, this is yours, right?
Yes, it certainly is. Yeah, it was a specific amount. I mean, we, we just ran through our, looked at the budget. We had run a lot of numbers either by talking to, you know, specialists, electricians and things, and also for some cases, going online and, and finding out the, the costs that, that things, that things would be. So the Phoenix Building dates back to 1893. It was, it's a H.M. Francis designed building. There's very little changed since then. The, it was original, its original owner was the, the Pittsburgh Mutual Fire Insurance Company and the Pittsburgh Historical Society bought it from them about 15, 15 years ago to make it its headquarters on Main Street. And in that time, it fixed up a lot of the, updated a lot of the systems. You can't necessarily see... You can't necessarily see, but that are so essential. Things like putting in a sprinkler system, doing new wiring, making it fully ADA accessible. And it's, in the whole time since then, it's been open to the public and free for the public to attend. We have exhibitions, lectures and things, and we have a research library, all of which welcome the public in. So, it is used a lot by the public and by, by visitors to Fitchburg. And we're working on improving our lighting and our signing so that we'll have more visibility. I've, we've been seeing, and I've even recently had people saying, you know, "I keep looking and I didn't think that you were open because it was so dark." And so, we're trying to add more lighting and better signage and so that people won't think that we're closed when we're open. But also, we want to put in exterior lighting so that it will really jump out as one of the architectural jewels of the Upper Common. I think that it, the exterior creates a point of interest on Main Street, but that happens less after dark. And we think that we can be an important part of this. The, all the businesses and things all along the Upper Common and the upper part of, of Main Street so that we help create a sense of activity and safety and occupancy on this very urban street. And it's a way that we can connect Dario's and Main Street Studios, I think, with the activities that are rise and grind and the other businesses up there and the new apartments that are next to us. And it may be that it'll be especially important during the time that the Fitchburg Theater Project is being done because if that's mostly a construction site, it could be a real darker hole in the area. And this would help, we would help connect all of the building together. So, the, this money is basically to help us provide extra lighting to the, to, over the facade and also at our historic doorway, which has an otherwise underutilized view into our beautiful marble foyer, which we're hoping to, which we're planning on repainting and putting new interior lights on to help make that a, a point of interest on Main Street even at, at nighttime. So, we've already invested a lot in Fitchburg's downtown. And so, we're hoping that these funds will help make this, us make the most of our, our location and also our programming for the city.
Sounds, sounds really great and it sounds very appropriate and a good statement piece. Is the $6,250 request, is that just the amount to do the whole project? Or is that just the additional funds needed to complete the project?
I'm sorry, is it, it's...
The amount requested, is that pretty much the whole, or just, it's just a little part of the project?
That's part, that's pretty much the whole for the exterior lighting and things. And, and we're doing other, other work on the, on the interior lighting. And then, there's, it's part of the interior lights that, that come out around the historic marble facade, that they're new lights that are going to be installed. We're taking out, there's some areas that, when it was built in the 19th century, that there were clear windows that allowed light to flow out at night around the historic marble facade. And those have been blocked up with, with plywood. So, it is, a little bit of it is to, is to replace the plywood with, with light, with, excuse me, with glass again. And then, also to put some lights there.
I'll be looking forward to see this.
Pardon me?
I says, I think we would, I'll be looking forward to seeing this improvement.
Great, thank you.
Any questions, board members? Online? Peter?
I think it's a great idea. I mean, the, the Phoenix Building has one of the nicest-looking facades in the entire city. And to light up that a little bit and make it more visible is a fantastic use of the money.
Any other comments from anybody in the audience, either virtual or live? All right. The next application is Crockerfield Handrails, Benches in Steel Painting, sponsored by the School Department. Requested amount is $32,500. Last year, award amount was $7,000. Fantastic. Let's go to the podium.
Hi, my name is Rick Kazanjin. I'm the president of the Crockerfield Restoration Committee. With me is Tom Lemey, who is our treasurer. Lenny Laxo, who was unable to be with us tonight, had prepared and submitted the application for this year's funds as he's done in prior years. We came up with three distinct projects that make up the request for the $32,500. Total cost for the projects is approximately $65,000. And we submitted the application on behalf of the School Department. And speaking with, with Jeremy, Jeremy, the business manager of the School Department, he's agreed that they feel that they can come up with the matching funds. And this is what we've typically done in prior years with CDBG grant applications. So, Tom will speak briefly about a couple of these and then I'll take over.
Okay.
Thank you, Rick. Good evening, everybody. One of the projects revolves around the grandstand benches at Crockerfield. Crockerfield covered grandstands, basically, is a stucco-cement structure, but the seats actually are made out of wood. And the original wood is almost over 100 years old. It was made out of southern Cypress. So, it's taken us three years to find out that really, you can't find southern Cypress anywhere. That's really cost-effective. So, we, we do have a replacement with, which is cedar, these two-inch planks to, well, you know, fasten together to create the four-inch size that you need. Crockerfield is on the National Register of Historic Sites. It's received monies from the Mass Historic Commission. So, we have to be very careful about matching the materials and the design and so forth. So, we, last year, we did 14 benches and they were all painted through volunteer efforts. They really looked terrific. We have another probably 14 or more that we'd like to replace. So, that project is really going to make the, you know, covered grandstands look a lot better. And our second project, which Rick will speak about, is the handrails.
So, the fieldhouse at Crockerfield is not currently handicap accessible. And we don't know if, within the confines of the current construction of the building, if we're going to be able to facilitate that to make it completely ADA-compatible. However, some things we can do is provide safe access and egress from the building by the installation of handrails at both the front door and out the back, out the rear door, down the big steps that expand across the back of the fieldhouse. We have a number of times during football season where we'll host some of the older classes that want to have a little reception at maybe the homecoming game. Perfect example this year was the class of '58, I think Pete Stevens' class, came for homecoming. And there's a number of, of people that are well into their 80s that come into the clubhouse, want to look at the pictures. They have a little coffee and, and refreshments there. And then, they walk down those back steps to come watch the football game. And there's no handrails. And we decided that, and Pete is part of the Crockerfield Restoration Committee as well. And I think he's one of the ones that suggested that we maybe should look at doing something there. And so, we, Lenny went out and, and spoke with somebody that would do this type of installation. And because it's a, because we're on the historical registry, we may have to get permission from the Mass Historical Society in order to do this. And we're aware of that. And I think Lenny has, has made mention of that. We've sent them the paperwork of the projects. It could take quite a while for them to get back to us. But hopefully, they'll realize that we need to do something like this for the safety and protection of our older citizens to be able to get in and out of the facility. So, we want to put some handrails that would attach to the concrete walls of the front door entrance. It's about six or seven steps from Circle Street up. And hopefully, that, that bridge, all that bridgework will be done next year and Circle Street will finally be open again to traffic. And then, the, there's, the stairwell in the back of the clubhouse is all wide open. So, we're going to have to have a little different type of handrails in the back with guardrails and things to, to ensure the safety of people coming in and out. And that's what we're looking to do there. Just a note on the, on the first project that Pete talked about. Lenny had researched, oh, probably 50 potential wood suppliers for the Cypress in, in the south because that's where it came from. Believe it or not, we actually found the supplier for what we're using right here in Massachusetts. And we were, we were one, we're one of the folks that had projects that were delayed and money that hadn't been spent because we couldn't find a supplier for the three-inch Cypress that we wanted. But now, we have a supplier that'll give us the type of planks that we purchased for the first 14 bench replacements. The Rotary Club of Fitchburg volunteered their time to come in and treat and paint those. By the, they actually got a grant from their district to actually purchase the paint and rollers and all the supplies and, and paint those benches. And they've actually continued to move on. And they've done the first three or four rows of the covered grandstand. They plan to come back in the spring and do the rest of them. But ideally, we'd like to get approval at some point to, to finish replacing those 36 or so benches that really need to be completed. Tom will talk about the last.
Yeah, last project that we're hoping to do is the painting of the structural steel support frame and the spiral stairs that are going into the press box at Crockerfield. Big high structure there. And Lenny investigated that structure. And there's a lot of needs for painting, but there's also some rusting going on underneath the threads. And those are, those treads are really, you know, quite thin. So, the remaining $35,000 of this $65,000 project is to, is to repaint those and to restore those treads that are on the spiral staircase. So, thank you very much. I don't know if you have any questions for us, but we'd be happy to answer them.
I'll ask. Does, any board member have any questions? Anybody else in the public? No? What a large community effort, looks like.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That totaled at least our public facilities and improvement section. The next section is public services. And the project here, first one, is Street Outreach, sponsored by the Board of Health. Requested amount is $20,000. Mr. Curry?
Good evening, Planning Board. Steve Curry from the Health Department. As you may know, our street outreach program started in July of 2021. We actually have street workers, or street outreach workers who actually visit folks out in various areas, are unsheltered folks out in various areas of the city. We are looking to expand our program. We would like to use some of the CDBG funds for supplies to equip our street outreach worker when he does meet unsheltered folks. It goes, hygiene kits and, and supplies to, to our population helps with building trust. And it builds a relation, helps build a relationship so that he can go further and possibly down the road to, to some sort of treatment, whatever the need is. Last year, we operated on, on another grant. We actually utilized motels during periods of extreme weather. That obviously isn't a sustainable program. It became very expensive. We did house upwards of 30 individuals in extreme weather conditions. I believe it was four or five times during the last winter. This year, we actually signed an MOU, memorandum of understanding. I'm tongue-tied tonight. With Fitchburg Housing Authority in December, we are now able to utilize Fitchburg housing property on Mechanic Street. We actually operated a warming shelter, warming center for three days. Last weekend during the storm, we had upwards of 15 to 20 individuals at night during those three days. So, we would like to continue operating the warming shelter. We will probably be doing something very similar next week when weather conditions, temperatures are dropping over next weekend. So, we would like to utilize funds to, to continue operations with our warming center. And I believe that's about it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from any board members? Anybody else in the audience, either virtual or online? Okay, virtual is online, sorry. Virtual or live.
There's no answers.
Okay. We're, we're the live ones. Yeah. Okay.
Thanks, Steve.
The next application is Fitchburg's Farmer's Market, Growing Places Garden Project, Inc. And the amount requested is $7,324.80. Very specific. Is there any here from Growing Places?
Yes.
Online?
I'm here. I'm, I'm virtual slash online.
There we go.
Perfect.
You're all set. Go right ahead.
Can you hear, okay. So, and I apologize for not being there. My fifth grader is in a band concert tonight, so I'm sitting on a stairway at what's usually a public school, so forgive me. So...
We appreciate, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you for, thank you for having me. And thank you for putting me on early. Yay! So, the Fitchburg Farmer's Market has been operating in Fitchburg for many years now. And it has been at different locations. And also, it has been through different iterations. And I, every year, the organization who has been managing it, Growing Places, really takes a hard look at what's working and what's not. And we try and make it the best we can to fit the community's needs. And my recommendation and my staff's recommendation is based on our other farmer's markets that we manage and looking at the broader context of the community and what's going on. And what we are recommending, but we would want our Fitchburg Advisory Committee to approve this as well, if we are funded, is that we move the market to a once-a-month Saturday market. That would allow so many more vendors to be able to come to the market. That's what we did, I know you don't want to hear this word, but in Lemonster. And it worked very, very, very well. We have about 10 to 15 vendors who come every market. And I know that, you know, in addition to having accessibility and offering healthy food, we also want to help the local economy and create place-making opportunities. I think that's a really important feature of the market. So, what our proposal is, is we would love to operate it year-round. We would operate it once a month in, at the Upper Common still, on a Saturday for the early afternoon. I think it would capture a good amount of people. And then, we move it, and we are there right now, to the Fitchburg Art Museum for the winter months. And that seems to be working really, really well. And so, those are the, those are the proposed changes that we would love to do. And we really think it will be super-successful. So, I'll stop there and, and let you guys ask questions as you may have them. Thank you.
All right. Are there any questions from any board members? Any questions virtual?
I don't really have a...
Go ahead, Peter.
I don't really have a question, but I do have a comment.
Okay.
I think the idea of, I mean, being in the Upper Common myself, I see the Farmer's Market set up on Thursdays in the Upper Common. And I, I do agree 100% that a Saturday presence would probably be well-received by not only the vendors, but people that want to buy their products. I think it's a great idea.
All right.
Thank you, Peter. Appreciate that.
Is there anyone here in the audience has any comments regarding this proposal or questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to sign off.
All right. Take care.
You, too.
We have our next application, Spartacus, sponsored YMC of Central Massachusetts, Monmouth. Monmouth Community Branch. Requested amount is 25,000. Looks like last year, what amount was $11,148. We have anyone? I don't see anyone live. Yes, we do. Come right up to the podium.
Thank you. Good evening. Hi, my name is Lisa Welcome, and I am the Executive Director of the YMCA, Monmouth Community Branch. For those of you that don't know, we're right around the corner, 55 Wallace Ave. And we run a program called the Spartacus Program, and it provides services to at-risk youth ages 13 to 18. Our emphasis is on youth development, healthy living, social responsibility, and we do that through the physical fitness that we provide, team-building, life skills, workshops on things like anger management, domestic violence, and we also provide community service activities. The ongoing demand for positive out-of-school opportunities for teens continues to grow. We're still seeing the lingering effects of COVID. We're seeing increased anxiety and depression. There's been a drop in academic performance in the MCAS tests, with the city, sorry, performing lower than the state average. And there's still a need for the increased physical activities that were lost during COVID, when the extracurricular activities were not happening. So, in real time, we are currently serving 124 teens each week in our facility, and I saw applications today, so that number actually is not real-time any longer, it has changed, but we are just seeing such an increase in the teens coming in. Typically, I would anticipate seeing an additional 75 by the end of June, but I expect that number to be even higher. We normally serve around 200 a year, probably going to be around 300 this year. So, we are looking, so currently, we have 50 youth enrolled in our Spartacus program. It's a very structured program. We are asking for an increase in funding so that we can increase our staff ratio, so we can serve 100 participants in a structured program. We do offer, you know, we have basketball, the pool, things like that, but for the structured activities, we need staffing. So, yeah, basically, that's it. We're looking for additional funding to increase our staffing, so we can do more structured activities with the teens that are coming into our program every day. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Thank you for your time.
Any board members? Comments? Anyone virtual? Or live in the audience here? Okay. Thank you for your time today. We have Drug Enforcement and Foot Patrol Program, sponsored by the Fitchburg Police Department, and the amount requested $60,000. Last year's was $61,378.05.
Precisely.
Precisely.
Precisely. Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Planning Board members. First of all, I'd like to begin by stating how grateful I was for last year's support for our program. The Fitchburg Police Department has been a longstanding recipient of CDBG funding over the years. I believe we've been involved in excess of maybe 25 years now, receiving some assistance from CDBG to combat the illicit sale of drugs in the city of Fitchburg. I've said it before at other Planning Board meetings, it'd be nice to not have to come in front of you and ask for these funds, but the fact remains that that problem still exists. I'm pleased to announce that last year, we met our objectives that we set forth, that I set forth to my narcotic team. Just to give you a few highlights, last year, we executed 52 search warrants in the city. We arrested over 50 people selling illegal narcotics within the CDBG zone area. More importantly, we confiscated 14 firearms, and we took almost 6,000 grams of cocaine and fentanyl off the street of Fitchburg. So it was a successful year in terms of disrupting the flow of illegal narcotics in the city. Last year, I augmented our funds by additionally putting out foot patrols and using some of the funding to have a more visible presence of uniform law enforcement downtown, and I expanded that last year to the rail trail. It was very successful. We had a lot of great outcomes from it, and it's our hopes to continue that into year 50. Hopefully, there'd be a day that I don't have to come in front of here. Just to let the Planning Board know, each year, when I submit my operating budget, I do include what these funds would look like in our operating budget. As we're well aware of, each year, my operating budget, overtime is usually the first spot that gets cut. It's my hopes that I can get this into the operating budget, but until that day comes, I'm going to continue looking for any revenue to continue to battle the sale of drugs in the city and provide a visible presence downtown on our rail trail with uniformed police officers. Be happy to ask any questions on how we fared in '49, and my objectives are very clear. In year 50, my team will know exactly what I would like to see happen, and we need to continue battling this epidemic that we're dealing with. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Great work. Very commendable.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board members? Comments? And anyone live? Online? We do have anyone live in the audience?
As always, very prepared, chief.
I know.
Good job. It's...
A year, I won't have to come in front of you.
Perfect. We look forward to it. We look forward to not seeing you.
I say, this is a reunion of sorts for a lot of folks. Once a year, we check in. It's nice to hear all the good things going on. We have, the next one is a family homeless shelter, sponsored by North Star Family Services, and the requested amount of $10,000. Last year's award amount was $9,590.32.
Well, thank you for having me. North Star also has been a recipient of CBG funds for many years now. We've enjoyed a lot of support from City Fitchburg through this grant program, and it's made a huge difference. There's a lot going on with homelessness right now. We all are hearing it, and housing. But still, North Star is unique. We're still the only community-based, community-funded, family homeless shelter in our region. And that's definitely a big difference from being a state-funded, state-run operation. And we've talked about this for several years, so we don't have to bat it around anymore. But basically, we provide emergency shelter, food, clothing, emotional support, financial literacy, which is a huge piece of what we do. You know, we've talked about it over the years around, it's not normal for everyone to know how to save money, how to make money, how to prioritize spending, how to make something from nothing. You know, these are all things that hopefully we've learned. Maybe our parents taught us. Maybe we learned from a mentor. Not everybody has that. Not everybody has that support system. And there's a lot of things out there, a lot of challenges in the world today, as we know. Housing is a huge part of it right now. You know, I'm glad I don't have to rent, and I'm not a young person right now, because it's that hard. Now, picture being low income. Maybe you just got divorced, and you're making minimum wage and whatnot. You got a couple of kids. How do you pay for it all? Daycare, car, insurance, all the things that we know that are out there. Food, fuel, everybody, the dollar signs are just adding up. So what we're looking to get support from the CDBG program is for staffing. We still have a core staff of only four people. That's who runs this shelter 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So we're asking for $10,000, which is a small percentage of our staffing costs. Last year, as in most years, we serve approximately 50% Fitchburg families. You know, sometimes it's more, sometimes it's less. One of our star families from last year was a Fitchburg resident. Actually, when we did an appeal just last December, they were the focus of it, because they just did such a phenomenal job. It was a horrific story. Mom had breast cancer, the whole nine yards, rough, rough road, had two kids, had abusive relationship, didn't have a place to live, and now she's on the street. What do you do? We took her in, worked with her. She did a phenomenal job, did everything right, asked all the right questions, and really was working hard, and then moved out happy days into her own place and whatnot. We even, even though she was gone from the shelter, she got put on our Christmas list, you know, we tried to do well by the families around the holidays for the children, and she was bawling, you know, thanking us for all the support that we were giving to her, even though she wasn't in the building, in the program anymore, you know? And that's what we do. We hang in there with people that need it when they're down and out, like I would hope somebody would do with me, you know? So I appreciate your consideration, and if you have any questions, feel free to...
In the past couple of years, you were able to expand your housing, your number of units?
Still working on it. So for several years now, I've talked about a project that we have in the works, and I was just talking with Liz about it. It's been about five years in the works, and we're about two to three weeks away, hopefully, to starting to put a shovel in the dirt, to build a new apartment house that subsidized for 15 new apartments, new construction, right down the street from the shelter, and local folks will be able to get into the lottery system to be eligible, to be considered. So we're bringing 15 new units to the region that will be truly affordable for families. So, thank you.
Can you just state your name for the record?
I'm sorry?
State your name for the record.
John Hoag.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding this application? Go ahead, Peter.
I do have one question. This question is for John. John, how many would you say, how many families would you say were you able to successfully place into a more permanent living situation in year 49?
So last year, we served 19 families through the shelter. And that might seem like a small number, but folks don't just come into the shelter for a day or two and leave. They're in it for the long haul, to be taught and educated through how to manage money, how to hold on to a job, how to, you know, work with your family, work through, maybe you didn't have health insurance, maybe you didn't have daycare, maybe your car is dead, but you still need a vehicle. So how do you manage that acquisition of a new vehicle when you don't have too much money? So 19 families went through the shelter, and approximately 75 were successful in getting into self-sufficient, permanent housing.
You mean seven?
Seven.
Seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent. You said seventy-five.
Thank you.
Would you, John, would you say most of those families that you helped find housing are still living in that housing?
Well, when a family leaves, we track them for 18 months. Most families allow us to do that. Now, sometimes they change their phone numbers, and sometimes they move out of state, so we can't track everyone, but we haven't had anybody knocking on our door saying that they lost their housing, so that's a good thing. Usually, if somebody's in trouble, we hear, we get a phone call. So we've heard of no one losing their situation, or they haven't told us, or the other.
Okay, thank you.
And this is one of the ones, shelters that houses families versus...
Yeah, just families.
Just families.
Must have children, and they are legally guarded or under the age of 18.
Thank you. Anybody online have any comments? Anyone else virtual? All right.
Other than Peter, there's only two people on, so...
We have our next...
I mean, other than, other than our board, there's only two people on. I shouldn't have said Peter.
I'm like, well, no, Allyn's still in Alex's. Here we go. Our next application is Homelessness Prevention by Community Legal Aid. Requested amount of $20,000. Last year, award amount $10,069.80. Is there anyone here from Community Legal Aid? Not live, but is there anyone online?
I don't see anyone.
I don't believe so. Okay. It's okay. You know, we encourage people to come, but it doesn't mean you're not being considered either, so just a nice opportunity to hear about everything everyone's doing. Resident Services Coordinator and Activities, First Parish Housing, The Sundial. No award last year. Requested amount 22,500.
Hello.
Good evening, Mr. Strebb.
Yeah, my name's David Strebb. I'm the President of the Board of the Directors of First Parish Housing, and we operate The Sundial. We're a senior living community in Fitchburg that operates 164 studio and one-bedroom apartments. Our units are small and economical. We keep our rents down, but they are really without any other subsidy, other than our own efforts to keep our costs low. Until a few years ago, we were under the auspices of HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, but when we paid off our mortgage, we became fully independent, but as a result, we lost our funding for our Resident Services Coordinator. We've applied for block grant funds to help us fund a Resident Service Coordinator, because while we're strictly an apartment building, we still feel that the services that a Resident Services Coordinator provides are important. It helps keep residents in their apartment that otherwise would have to go in for costly government services, or a nursing home, or, I mean, a Resident Service Coordinator, I wasn't familiar with what they did before I personally experienced it in the line of being on the board at The Sundial. And it's really something, and it's not anything we have to do, but it's something that we want to do. They help with heating assistance applications, Medicare forms, phone calls to agencies, other assistance for those stressful day-to-day things the elderly have to deal with in their lives. So we feel it's important to fund this, but if we don't get some assistance funding it, we're going to have to raise our rent. So we are coming to you to ask you to help us keep our rents low and provide a Resident Services Coordinator for our roughly 200 residents. The elderly is an increasing part of Fitchburg's population, and we feel that it should be a part of the CDBG public service sector. I know that it's, these are difficult choices to make. I used to hate it, so my sympathies to you, Liz, for having to make these decisions, and to you, the Planning Board. But it would really help us out a lot and help the people of The Sundial a lot, and the elderly community in Fitchburg as a result, if you would fund this Resident Services Coordinator application. Thank you.
Thank you.
The only question I have, and it's a technical question, and quite honestly, Dave, you might know better than most, because you were involved, you know, years ago. I remember in the past, we had, I remember with Larry, we had a conversation about there were issues with funding with faith-based organizations.
I left that paragraph out, and I said, I'll skip it to keep it shorter, but the name First Parish Housing came from the First Parish Church, who provided the seed funding to create The Sundial over 50 years ago. While we are grateful to them, we are fully independent and have nothing whatsoever to do with the First Parish Church or any religious entity, so it's...
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you for asking.
No, no, I...
I should have stuck to the script.
I probably, yeah, I probably should have known that, too, but, yeah, I know we've had issues with some of the other ones.
A lot of people don't realize that The Sundial is fully independent, and it's an apartment complex, but we keep our rents low. People love to live there.
It's also one of the...
They're modest, they're very small units.
It's also one of the top five largest multifamily complexes we have in Fitchburg, I believe.
You know, I don't know how large the other housing authority buildings are, but we're 164 units, so 10 stories.
It's up there. I'll venture against it's top three, but...
And you know what? We pay taxes. We pay property taxes to the city. We are not a tax-exempt entity, so any assistance would be welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Any questions? Any board members? Comments? All right. Anybody else virtual? Council Boishman?
I do have one question.
Sure.
My question to Dave is, is there a set income? Is it low income? Or a guy like me can have a million dollars in the bank and go to your place and stay?
Yeah, I wanted to come up to the microphone to make sure people heard. There is no, there are no, the only income limitation is you have to be able to afford to live there. So you have to be, you have to make like around $1,100 a month in Social Security. There is no upper income limit at The Sundial. We are not, we are not low-income housing. We're affordable, because we keep our rents low. This money will help us keep those rents low. low because some people are struggling to pay our modest rents. We're about $560 a month rent.
I know some people that live here.
Yeah, yeah. People like living there from what I hear. I don't know if you've heard anything different.
No, because of rents low. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Onto, our next application is Transportation Steam. Boys and Girls Club of Fitchburg and Lemonster. Requested amount is $67,500. Last year's award amount was $14,385.48. Transportation, always.
Always. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is David Janisi. I'm representing the Boys and Girls Club of Fitchburg and Lemonster. Would also like to recognize my fellow cohort Lawrence Nefour from the Boys and Girls Club, who was also in attendance this evening. I stand before you tonight to advocate for increased funding for the Boys and Girls Club of Fitchburg and Lemonster, a cornerstone in our community dedicated to providing essential educational opportunities for our young learners of North Central Mass. The focus of our appeal is to, excuse me, the focus of our appeal is to secure transportation funds from the Fitchburg Community Development Block Grant, which will play a pivotal role in ensuring that the benefits of our after-school program reach as many students as possible. Our after-school program is not merely an extracurricular activity. It is a comprehensive educational initiative designed to empower our youth with the tools necessary for success. We are seeking your support to address a critical obstacle that currently hinders a significant number of Fitchburg students from accessing these invaluable opportunities, transportation barriers. The requested funds amounting to $67,500 will be dedicated to providing reliable and safe transportation services for approximately 400 students, with 120 of them hailing from Fitchburg Public Schools. Currently, we are operating with limited funding at a mayor $14,385, which restricts the scale and impact of our efforts. The benefits of our program are measurable and extend far beyond the confines of traditional education. Our focus on STEAM education ensures that students engage in hands-on activities that foster curiosity, critical thinking, and problem-solving skills. In a world increasingly defined by technological innovation, these skills are paramount for future success in diverse fields. Furthermore, our commitment to holistic health and wellbeing encapsulated in social-emotional learning introduces students to practices such as mindful exercises, expressive arts, movement therapy, nutrition education, and healthy eating habits. This holistic approach not only promotes physical wellbeing, but also contributes to the mental and emotional resilience of our young members. Beyond individual development, our program places a strong emphasis on community engagement. By removing transportation barriers, we aspire to increase the participation among Fitchburg youth, fostering a sense of belonging and community engagement among young learners. This is crucial for building confidence, self-esteem, and a profound sense of understanding that our communities work collaboratively for the greater good. It is important to note that the Boys and Girls Club of Fitchburg and Lemonster doesn't just stop at education. We also provide approximately 1,000 free hot meals a week to underserved children, addressing a fundamental need and contributing to the overall wellbeing of our community. I urge the Fitchburg Planning Board to consider the long-term impact of investing in the transportation needs of our after-school program. By allocating the requested funds, you are not merely facilitating access to educational opportunities, you are investing in the future success, health, and wellbeing of our Fitchburg youth and by extension, the prosperity of our community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. I guess, well, a question regarding, like the transportation aspects of it, I know this comes up every year about this. It's like, it's a, we know this is like a flagship facility for the Boys and Girls Club too, but the transportation piece and then why it's not funded by, you know, school funding or the legislature, just because it's like a driving over the line scenario. So any efforts been, you know, trying to tackle it from a different perspective to try to get that funded from direct allocation?
We're very proud to work with our delegation as it currently lies. We have great rapport with our state and local delegation and we are making strides and efforts with the Senator's Office as well as Representative's Office on those.
Great.
Yeah.
I'd like to hear that too, because it's like, it is a great program.
It is.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I do have one question. Transportation costs for the Fitchburg and Lemonster facility, is that, obviously Lemonster has transportation costs also?
Well, in fact, Lemonster utilizes the Boys and Girls Club as an actual bus route, so there is no cost in bringing Lemonster students to our facilities.
So the facility services both communities equally, yet Fitchburg has the burden of added transportation costs?
Well, that's more so a discussion that we would have to have with Fitchburg Public Schools. As it currently lies, we have to pay, Lawrence, if you want to jump in on that.
I was coming up to Adam.
He's our finance guy.
If you look at what we had, when this body sponsored us last year, it takes care of like a sixth of the cost of transporting students from here to the Lemonster facility. This, what we're asking is $375 a day for students to be transported there for 180 days. That is the minimum that we're really hoping that we'll get and it would help us to increase our advertisement to our school committees down here, the parents down here to know that, look, there is transportation available. You can pick up your kids from the club at the end of the night. So please, we're really hoping that this would help us. It's, I mean, it's $375 a bus for first student to drop the kids there.
So the transportation is from school to the facility and then the, and then the guardians' parents pick them up?
Correct. It's one way. They pick up from all the schools here to the facility and then parents pick up from there.
That's why, that's the question is like on, like rules-based, it's like, it's because it's the facility is just over the line that it's included as already part of the transportation for like the Lemonster facility, but since it's just going over the line, it's charging this amount of money because it's not part of the bus route. So like, how do you get extended to be part of the bus route for maybe X amount of miles over the line or something like that to be able to, you know, to absorb this fee?
Well, the only point I'm trying to make here is if this is truly a facility that services Fitchburg residents and Lemonster residents equally, shouldn't all transportation costs be shared equally between Fitchburg and Lemonster?
I will attempt to answer that Lemonster, like David started saying, that Lemonster kids are all dropped at the facility and so the school system picks up that cost. It's not any additional cost.
I understand.
Right.
Then the kids from Fitchburg, that's the difficulty, like we...
Right, it's not being funded.
That they have to drop them across the line. That is what makes that additional cost and that is why we're coming to Fitchburg to ask for that help.
Right, so it's additional monies on top of, you know, the bus routes that are bringing children home from Fitchburg. This would be like another bus that would bring them to this location. It's already, but it's already covered in one community. So the Fitchburg Public School system doesn't cover this. Lemonster Public School system is covering it for theirs. On that side, there's also, if I correct me if I'm wrong, we've been through this so many times, that there is either like a pretty reduced fee for Fitchburg students to attend this program as well.
There is reduced fee. Any family that is struggling, we are working real hard. David in charge of development, writing grants here and there, trying to get that subsidy that is necessary for the kids. That's why we're really coming again and trying to fleet that. Please make this available. It will help us. It will make it lighter for us and then we can be able to advertise and get more kids. I mean, all of us know the impact of idle kids at the end of the day and how that affects the community as a whole, but if transportation is available and they can show up at the facility, it helps all of us take care of them and our partnerships with WPI would give them something to look forward to. And we have many programs, arts and science, and we're asking for this as a STEAM program, which is really very helpful and keep our members in our community engaged.
And I don't mean to say that our school system isn't like funding this on purpose. I don't know that they're allowed to either because of where, of, it's over the line. Because of the location.
We just need to move the Boys and Girls Club to Fitchburg.
Wow. Well, and the funding request is just opposite.
Maybe one day we'll be able to come with that request for a building here so we can grow that program.
And I don't, this probably predates both of you because I remember this conversation a decade or more ago with Larry. One of the conversations then was if they accept blocker and funding, they had to provide free attendance for students. I'm certain that used to exist. That doesn't exist anymore.
No, that does not exist anymore, but that was at one point.
Okay. It was a requirement of the blocker and funding at one point, that if you accepted any funding, that you, that part of that funding was that service had to be free for students. I...
So I think the, that was certainly the interpretation at the time and I would say now, the interpretation is the service, the fee needs to be reasonable to provide access. It can't be a barrier.
So Fitchburg has to approve the fee?
We do, that we do get that information about what the fee is and we haven't had a problem with it. I think it was like 30 bucks, something like that. It's like nominal fee, yeah.
As long as it's, as long as it falls within our guidelines, meaning it's not up to the Boys and Girls Club to determine if it's reasonable. It's up to the city of Fitchburg to determine if it's reasonable. That's my point.
Right. And if there was excess income, that's where it would really become problematic if they were creating program income because as a result of the fees, then it would be problematic, but that really is not the case.
I just want to make sure that there was a control there because like I said, I remember that conversation for years and years was basically if they get a dollar, then that was, the dollar was free tuition for all students. So, but that's, that certainly makes sense. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, my friend.
No, that is a stellar program they have there. Astronauts and all.
I'm there.
Absolutely, Counselor Boishman.
I'm going to shout the board. I'm all in favor of this application, $65,000 or $67,000. I'm a firm believer that we don't do enough for our youth of the city at the young age to get them involved. I don't know if any of you have ever been to the Boys and Girls Club. I used to go up to 2009, COVID came out, then I just stopped going. So it's my fault for not going, but I was really impressed, really impressed, and it's well worth it. And I believe the kids can get a very good education out of it. And I know my neighbor, who is, who's an engineer, was working up there with the kids. His name is Chad, on the electronic part of it, to get him involved in the contacts that they had. So in all fairness, you don't hear me say that very often. I'm in favor of this 100% Liz, and you'll probably hear me say it again.
Right down.
And the $67,000, I think it's well worth it to get the kids going. As a matter of fact, I'll tell you quite frankly, I told, I said this to you guys before and I'll say it again. If the parents are like my wife, my wife would have liked my kids to go, but I was working nights and they had no transportation to come home. And she didn't want to put people out of the way. It's great that you borrow, you ask them to pick them up, one, two, three, four, and five, but when it becomes an everyday thing, you know how we are. We start saying things and we start talking and we start getting mad. So if we want to change, I believe the city of Fitchburg and our youths, I think we should invest in it. I'm 100% for it, 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else online or live?
Nope.
Okay. Our next application is the Mayor's Energy Fund, sponsored by the Mayor's Office, and the requested amount is $25,000. Last year's award was $47,9516. I think that was just a starting point.
That's correct.
Seed money.
Yes. So, good evening. My name is Alexander Vera. I'm the Chief of Staff to Mayor Squalia. And so, yeah, we applied for $25,000 for the Mayor's Energy Fund. It helps provide assistance to low-income families here in Fitchburg who can't pay their utility costs. And so we're figuring, you know, it's around, if we cut checks of $500 each, that's around 50 families that we can help, but the ranges, you know, the amounts range. So just the other day, we cut one for $300. So, you know, everyone's needs are different and I think that this is very important. We did already get a commitment from a private donor for $5,000 to help us with this fund.
And also, my understanding is it's administered by the Community Development Office in-house?
It's, we are working on the logistics of that, whether we were thinking of whether to do it with MOC or help with the Mayor's Office and Community Development. We're still working on the easiest process for that.
To do that. It's the, yes, just the administration portions of it, exactly, all the verification and all that to do that, yeah. Absolutely.
Yep.
All right. Any questions from any board members? Any from the public? Live? Online?
Nothing online.
I will make one comment. The prior year, or I guess current year, up until January, has been administered by the Mayor's Office with Community Development Technical Assistance. So, just to clarify that.
And I remember when we did 49, that was kind of a, we used that as the overage of what money we had left over from other categories. That was one of the categories that just kind of got dumped into at the end.
This is what's left.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's tough, but...
That's why there's cents.
Yeah.
All right.
But it's nice to meet you.
Yes, it is. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Our next application is Serving Fitchburg Through Partnership by the Spanish American Center. Our requested award amount is $15,000. No award for last year. Do we have anyone not present live, but anyone online?
I want to say I saw Sue. Is she still there?
Sue O'Brien? Is that who it is?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Maybe she's not available anymore.
That's okay. Sue, are you there? If you are, oh, there you go.
You can hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yes. Okay, all right, great. Yeah, I'm Susan O'Brien and I'm the grant writer at the Spanish American Center. The Spanish American Center is a multi-purpose, multi-service agency located on Spree Street in Lemonster. We do a wide array of programs from domestic violence support for survivors. We have a food pantry. We have an after-school program. We serve elders through a grant from the Central Mass Agency on Aging. We do, providing lots and lots of meals in the community, especially right now, as we are contracted with MOC to provide three meals a day to families living in the area, motels, the migrants. So we are, we are pretty busy. So we are located in Lemonster, but actually, as of recently, our food pantry clientele is more from Fitchburg than it is from Lemonster. And with all of our programs, we're pretty equal between the two cities. So what we really want to do is establish a presence in Fitchburg and we have the opportunity to do this in a collaboration with Restoration Recovery. They will allow us to use space to bring one of our domestic violence advocates and also our information and referral specialists who works with elders to have office space once a week in their office in Fitchburg. This is a way that we can help people in Fitchburg to be able to get services in their own community, their own physical community, and not have to think about how they're going to get to Lemonster, whether they need to take a bus, et cetera. In exchange, kind of for that, they have talked to us about really wanting to have an ESL class in their facility for a number of their clients who are interested in this and as well as some of the public, the general public in the area. So we will also provide that and the major part of this funding is actually to pay, our request is to pay our ESL instructor for coming to provide a weekly program in ESL at Restoration Recovery. So we're very excited about that. We really, really want to establish a physical location in Fitchburg to match with our client population and to make it easier for them to get services.
Thank you.
So that's, that's our request.
Have you, was this, any coordination in the past with, I recall, like the Claygorn Neighborhood Center?
Well, we worked with the Claygorn Neighborhood Center in the past... Well, we worked with the Claygorn Neighborhood Center in the past. Of course, they, you know, they provided similar services to ours, to the Latino community in Fitchburg. I mean, we always worked with them in a variety of ways. But I don't think we I don't think we sought CDBG funding in collaboration with them in the past, if that's what you mean.
Yeah, I was wondering if you collaborate with them because they have the school programs and other aspects too with the our Spanish population pieces. So this is our I'm just trying to understand, this is like another like another branch when you're working with Restoration Recovery.
Right. I mean, that's we don't have another we don't have another presence in Fitchburg right now. Yeah. Yeah.
Right. It was just more of of right, the different types of services because of the Neighborhood Association was doing ESL and other aspects like that.
You know, they're long closed. Claygorn Neighborhood Center is long closed.
Really?
Yeah.
See, I was talking about I'm like, why have I not seen this application in a while for them? Because it's like they we always used to come with that.
Claygorn? Claygorn did?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Well, they they're they don't exist anymore.
So we sift to like fit the need in that aspect is, I recall, we all we previously also had, I think that Fitchburg had its own Spanish American Center.
Fitchburg Spanish Council.
Yes.
A long time ago.
Yeah. And I can see where the consolidation of services is really helpful in that it's like just branching out to have a like a satellite and presence could be helpful, definitely.
Right. Yeah, it could. Definitely.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah.
So I just pretty much I was just trying to understand about just what other aspects or services were in that were in the area and not even being said with if we don't have even the other service available that are more of a need for sure.
No, that's right. That's correct. Yes.
Okay. And I apologize for not knowing that about the Claygorn Neighborhood Center. Anybody have any comment or question regarding this application? Here's no Counselor Boesman?
I have to apologize for that lady up there. I agree with her. I was down to the Spanish Center a couple weeks ago because one of my tenants is a member down there, and they do use they do service a lot of members from Fitchburg. There is a lot of people from Fitchburg that use the center down there, so I just wanted to let you know. So that, okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
You're too cheering today.
Yeah.
You're throwing me off, man.
Well, it's I'd just say it's like nice, nice to see where communities collaborate, where you have something really good going on, and that's to be shared rather than trying to to split it in each one's struggle, so to speak. So it's nice to be able to support one another in that aspect.
Thank you, Susan.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Another one, our next application of Children of Fitchburg and Lemonster Calming Kit Project sponsored by Empower Children for Success, and the amount requested is $20,000. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much for inviting me to this event. This is my first time. My name is Marieth S. McLean. I am the founder and and the president of Empower Children for Success. So this is a new organization. With the help of the New View Communities Steward Program, we were able to get our nonprofit organization formed in on November 2020. And with the help of people in our community, we were able to raise a lot of funding on not a lot, but, you know, enough funding to be able to implement our first calming kit project. We were able to distribute 150, just like I wrote in the grant, so. And we were able to distribute all those kits to different agencies like MOC Head Start in Fitchburg, Seven Hills Family Support Program, different childcare facilities. And then in 2022, we were able to get 100, 110 kits, and we distributed every kit to Lock Inc. You are aware about the Lock Inc. program, right? Okay. And then last year, I collaborated with Haywood Hospitals Handle With Care Program to give them enough, I believe, 100 kits so that they can distribute it to our first responders and emergency service workers. This kit is an effective tool to really help children who are experienced traumatic events calm down. I know because I have been a family childcare provider for three decades, and a lot of people who came to my childcare program were people that are that are in DCF supportive vouchers. And so a lot of them come to me with a lot of different issues, and even their their parents also have issues. So I know how this kit can not only help the child learn self-control, but it's also helping parents gain co-regulate because by helping them learn how to use the tool, they themselves are able to, you know, learn techniques that they may not be able to learn as a young child. And so when we when we do not address some type of traumatic event as a young child, we grow up as adults that do not know how to control our behaviors. So this is a really, really effective tool, and I urge every single one of you to care about the youngest people in our community, children, you know, preschool children. I'm not sure if any of you are aware that a lot of people in preschool and even toddler are being expelled from the programs because of behavior issues. And this needs to stop because everybody, every young child deserves a high-quality environment where they can thrive. And we can help them do that by helping them learn how to self-regulate so that they can stay in, you know, childcare centers and even preschool, public preschools. We I also have to highlight the fact that this is just for the Fitchburg. I tried to revise and edit my application, and some of them got edited. And for some reason, the title says Children of Fitchburg and Lemonster did not get edited. I don't know why. So this is just for the Fitchburg residents, and I I know that we have more than 900 children enrolled in our preschool programs. And I I also know that, you know, one of my colleagues who is Luisa Fernandez tell me about, you know, her day, and sometimes she has to go out there and chase children who are just running out of the classroom in our public school system. Also, my my organization is all volunteer, so everything, all the projects, any money that we get for our projects, go toward the project. One of our projects is actually training potential family childcare providers to successfully go through the licensing process. And as an incentive, when they get their license, I actually collaborated with LIF, and the city secured funding for them to apply for the startup funds. And they have actually given six of our graduates who successfully got the license and are now operational, $3,500 each. And two, two more are waiting to get that same amount of money from the city. So I really appreciate, you know, the city's help, helping our most vulnerable, especially now that the city's student population is getting getting more diverse and with language barrier and, you know, all the barriers that a lot of people, immigrant people like me, face. I I believe that this tool is going to help them learn to to control their behavior, and they're better able to communicate their needs and, you know, have people can understand their needs and meet those needs. So thank you so much for listening to me, and I hope that, like I said, now is the time to care about, you know, the most the youngest people in our community.
Okay. Good. Quick question. Your requested amount is $20,000, but it sounds it's like your budget seems to be like flexible, so any amount would be.
Yes.
Worthwhile to be able to it's not like it's not going to happen. If you can't get 20,000, you can't do the project.
That's right. That's right.
We can do that with any amount.
Going towards, you know, yes. So any amount, I think, is, you know, better than, you know, nothing at all. But I would like to start providing these kids because I know a lot of people in, you know, children, young children.
Yeah. The reason why that question's asked is there's some applications we get that are all or nothing.
Right.
They they need the total amount in order to operate the the program.
Right.
And since you're the last one in this category, I was going to mention after you, but it'll help because you're here. So there's almost $300,000 in the 11 proposals for this category. This category is one of the two categories that has a cap on it, has a 15% cap. So there's 300,000-ish in requests. We can only fund up to 135-ish thousand. So this this category in particular is where we have to get creative with where things can get spread out. So that's why that question was asked.
Yes, and I appreciate the question. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody online? Any from the board have any questions or?
Nope.
Comment about the proposal? All right. Nobody online or hands raised?
Nope.
All right. Anybody live? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again for the opportunity.
And that that was the end of that proposal for that category. As Paul mentioned, that was 11 proposals, $292,000 in requests. Our next category is Economic Development, which we have New View Communities Small Business Technical Assistance Program. Requested amount is 30,000. Last year's award was 25. Good evening. Hey, nice to see you.
It's so lovely to see familiar faces and new faces to me.
Back to Fitchburg.
Yes, yes. I think I threw you off earlier. So thank you again for for this continued support for New View's communities. My name is Dolores Tivo Munoz, and I'm the deputy director. So I oversee the Small Business Technical Assistance Program. We are asking for an additional $5,000 this year. This is, I believe, our 27th year of getting funding from CDBG funds in this category. It's basically essentially rising costs, and we added a new team member to our to our team. And this person is full-time. I know Ray Belanger, who's our director, always started at part-time, and during the pandemic, we just increased the amount of support that we were giving the community, and Fitchburg in particular. And so, you know, his hours went back to 40, and now they're going back down. So we hired a really great new person who complements the team. She is she was an intern from our partnership with Fitchburg State University in for her master's in business administration. So that's really great that we're able to to provide a full-time job to someone in the community. You know, it's just also been a huge demand in our services. I don't know if you've seen lately, a lot of the businesses popping up, you know, are the support that that our program does is essentially, it's really a partnership, right? We get we work very closely with the city, with other funding sources, banks, the Redevelopment Authority, the Community Development Office here with all sorts of partners to be able to help small businesses thrive, help them from nuts to bolts, be able to get a business plan, to be able to get funding. And this funding in particular helps us to really support and build small businesses in the City of Fitchburg. While we're we cover 22 cities and towns, this funding is very specific to just Fitchburg residents, Fitchburg businesses. It creates jobs. We really try to target, and and we're successful at really helping low- to moderate-income clientels with with a high percentage of people of color who want to start their business and who essentially do. A lot of times, we'll get a call from the chamber, or we'll get a call from the Community Development Office to help see someone get through the big hump, to make sure that their loan packages are good to go so that they can get funding to start their their amazing business. Some of those businesses that you see are like Rising Grind, or Mama Juana's, or all of the Dario's Tacos Tequila. We've been working with them since, you know, that they started their one of their first restaurants. So, you know, we're very, very involved, and and you all know that we're Community Development Corporation, so we that's just one piece of what we do in the community. We develop housing, which I know New View's not a stranger to you all. And it's just such a it's just such a huge compliment for for the city and all of the work that we're all doing together. I will quickly just say, part of what we were able to do to and provide for the community are these complimentary strategic services through our Housing and Financial Services Department, through our Community Organizing Department. We have really experienced staff, I mean, who've been doing this for some for 27 years plus. And, you know, I think it's just been it's I think it's, you know, a very small amount that really goes a really long way. I think we've been just last year, I think we were able to get about $100,000 in funding for small businesses, keep about eight jobs this just this year. I think we're at half of what we're what our our goals are. So, you know, it's really that small business niche for Fitchburg is really important, especially to fill our downtown. So again, thank you for the continued support. Thank you for this this opportunity to let you know. And if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thank you. Wonderful work. Is there you mentioned quite a number like quite a number of businesses there. Do you know approximately, like, how many?
For Fitchburg, I can tell you what we did in year 49 so far. We've already supported 19 CDBG eligible eligible businesses, so we still have until June to complete that. And I think that was sort of our our we're at half of what we said we were going to do. Those businesses have already created or retained eight jobs. And like I said, we've helped businesses receive $35,000 in loan funds, and we helped one business receive $10,000 in grant funds. So I believe over, you know, since 2010, the agency has counseled 1,420 small businesses with under 20 employees that have created 926 jobs, retained another 1,875 jobs, and secured over 12.7 million in financing and secured over $600,000 in grants.
You know your numbers.
Well, I have them here nicely written for me.
You could have taken credit for it.
You put those down. It's like, that's a little work.
Thanks, Dolores.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. And again, it was really nice seeing you all.
You, too.
If those are not where Dolores was a former counselor.
That's right.
Me, too.
And for those that weren't aware, Dolores used to parade about 50 kids in here for CDBG meetings a decade plus ago, but it's good to see you.
I kind of miss that. That's one of the things we used to get the kids.
Yep.
I know it's late at night all the time, but it was really nice to see everyone.
The staff are like, um.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments from our board members? Yes, please.
So like I mentioned, through the help of New View Communities Steward Program, I was able to organize Empower Children for Success. And through the Business Technical Support Program, I was also able to get the technical assistance to write, you know, a business plan. And also, one of And also one of our family childcare graduate that, you know, was able to get the funding, the startup grant funding from the, from the economic development, from the city, also benefited from the technical program. So, it's a really worthy cause.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Jo Bohart, Economic Development Director for the city. I wanted to add just a little bit more to some of the remarks that Dolores was describing of the range of businesses that get this assistance. I'm often on the front lines as we're looking to find businesses that want to inhabit empty spaces, that sort of thing. And it's actually wonderful that the businesses that tend to emerge are small, independent entrepreneurs. That's exactly kind of what we're all hoping for. Many of them, though, lack the technical know-how to be successful and that's exactly why New View and the one-on-one free business planning guidance is instrumental. There are other avenues that businesses can pursue. Many of you have heard of SCORE, that's a national nonprofit. They're affiliated with Clark University in Worcester. They sometimes come and have appointments at the chamber and things, but nine chances out of 10, everyone gravitates to New View partly because of the quality of the guidance that they're offering and also the convenience. So, anyway, I can say with great confidence on any given year, dozens, dozens of businesses that I'm interacting with that we're sending to New View to do business planning. Now, not every single one of those ends up opening a business, but what they're learning is all of the things that are needed to make sure that the next time they try something, they're doing it correctly. Of the businesses you're seeing just in the downtown district, nearly all of them that have opened have utilized New View's one-on-one technical assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. I know this is your category, community, community development, economic development section. We've got this next. And again, if there's any questions or comments regarding that proposal?
No.
No. We have the Sign and Facade Program by Community Development, requested amount 60,000. Last year's was 55,806.
So, we've had great success with the sign program and just about all of our funds are obligated. So, we anticipate by the time July 1 comes around, we will have no more funding for signs to give out. So, we certainly still have interest in the sign program and we would like to continue as businesses come in, as existing businesses are thinking about maybe changing that banner that they've had sitting on their front to a sign. We'd like to be able to offer them this incentive. It has been a great partnership with the business community to be able to offer this. And we're also eliminating blight by encouraging and incentivizing some of these businesses to take down those defunct signs that are sitting there and actually putting up a nice quality sign.
I think I just saw the new awning go up recently on Main Street, replacement, I think.
New awning.
Yeah. On one that was just seeing bear poles previously.
They did not get, they did not get assistance from us.
Okay. But I saw that improvement.
But it is still great.
Yeah, and then there was the request of the
Sometimes we inspire
There you go.
Other, other property owners.
Well, you see one do it, you want to keep, you want to kind of keep up.
Keep it going.
And there was also the, was it Putnam Street? The new occupants over there with the, let's read, program, maybe looking for a mural or something around that building too, wraparound.
Correct. We have a number of businesses that are not, that are trying to open over the next six months or so that we may not be able to provide this opportunity to if we don't replenish this fund.
Any questions from the board members or the public?
How many facades did $55,000 cover?
So, we're not doing facades. We're only doing signs and awnings.
Three signs for $55,000.
So, I would say the average sign is somewhere between five and 10,000.
Yep.
You know, so I would say, so average, I
Five or 10.
I would say maybe six or seven.
Okay.
Our next application is Small Business Development Funding, Community Development Department in the request of $90,000.
Yes. So, this is actually a combination of business grant and loan assistance that we would want to provide and it's just lumped into one category because the, the volume of lending or granting that we do really does ebb and flow and it's hard to predict exactly how many business loans we might, loan applications we might get. You know, I think last year we actually had quite a banner year and I think we gave over $100,000 in loan funds out. We've given quite a bit out this year. We do still have a little bit of funding from a prior year, not last year, that's why it looks like NA because it wasn't from year 49, but it was really from a prior year. And we do have money revolving. There was a period where we really didn't have any loan activity and we didn't have any revolving funds, but because we've given so many loans out recently, we now actually are starting to see some revolving activity. So, I don't want to, I don't want to say that we don't have any funding.
Is this mostly for lo, for loans?
The revolving loan activity has to be for loans. Those have to recycle. We can't give grants with that.
Is that
But what we want to do with some of, so some of this may go to loans and some of this may go to grants if we were approved. And what we would do, when I, when I say the grants, I really mean two different things. One is giving out the small $3,500 grants to activities like those daycare providers that are just starting out, that are doing home-based daycare. And so, they're starting on a small scale, creating their own job. But inevitably, there's some equipment that needs to be purchased, you know, maybe a minor repair in their home in order to pass their inspection. And so, $3,500, $3,500 can go a long way for those types of businesses and we don't want to expect, we're not expecting repayment in those cases because it's a small grant. We also did a similar thing with our, with food entrepreneurs. And we, we were able to assist training and serve, serve safe certification for 10 food entrepreneurs that will be using the Pittsburgh Public Market when it opens up. So, we'd like to have the flexibility to do those sorts of activities with daycare providers, with food entrepreneurs, with other types of small startup micro businesses. So, those really are those folks that are under 80% of the median income for their household when they, when they start and they don't have employees. They're just really creating their own job that way. We also want to do something a little bit different with this as well. We want to incentivize the creation of a shared retail space. So, what we would be doing is we'd be putting out a call, a request for proposals for an entity or individual to create a shared retail space. And then we provide some assistance in the form maybe of employment funds for that operator and/or, and/or utility and rent assistance. So, really to position them for success would be to help them defray those initial startup costs so they can get it going, get enough interest from retailers to come in and either pay rent for like a booth or a corner of the space, or they could do it as a consignment kind of, whatever business model they have. We would expect that they would have a business plan, that this would be a fully flushed-out activity. So, that, that's the intent with some of this money. If it, if we don't get good responses, we would not move forward and we would just use the funds for business lending and granting.
So, you're looking, like the RFPs, like for a host type of, host space or someone to offer that?
I mean, it could be a property owner that responds, but I think more likely it would be a partnership hopefully between a property owner and entity or an individual that would take on the responsibility of creating and managing that space. So, there are examples in other communities where this kind of thing happens. The example that I always think of is Jeffries Co-op in Lunenburg. That's more antique.
That, I was just thinking that.
But if, and they rent booth space, so they have like over 100 booths. And I think they rent it like $85 a month or something along those lines. They generate enough income to staff a person that actually does the checkout, right? So, none of those people have to be there, none of the retailers have to be there on the regular, but they are able to benefit from that. And, you know, they, we have a whole industry that's been growing around pop-up markets on the weekends and it's great, but we want those folks to have a brick and mortar and we want it to be downtown. So, that, that's the goal is, we're really trying to start curating some of the retail that comes in, so.
Okay.
Okay. I was, a question regarding that too is, some, because some of the activity that was mentioned, like about the daycares is how that works with like New View pieces of it? Like is it, how does that just supplement or that type of a project?
So, that, actually, that's a really great example of a partnership where we're, so New View and Meritza and her partner are, they're going through the stewards program to train the daycare providers. And then some of those daycare providers who are ready to take the next step will go to New View's business assistance to develop business plans and help them prepare their application for their grant assistance.
So, the training's occurring there in your
So, there's two different kinds of trainings. There's the, there, well, one training and then one technical assistance.
Operate a business and then
The training is specific to what you need to do as a daycare, a home-based daycare provider to get your license. So, there's a whole education piece on the daycare, you know? You have to make sure you know what you're doing.
Is that, that's offered by your office?
That is not, that is done through New View's stewards and
Program.
Meritza and Beth. And that, we don't fund any aspect of that, that, that's just something that's happening through other, other means. So, we're really coming in at the end, once they've got the training and once they've got their business technical assistance, to provide them with grant assistance if they qualify
Got it.
And they're ready. Yeah.
Okay. Want to see that symbiotic piece. Any questions from any of our board members first? All right. Anybody live in the audience? And everybody virtual? Okay. Our next.
Oh, me again.
Don't move.
Do you want it on there, Paula?
No, 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 just like this, don't move. I'm just being, it gets late, I get punchy, you know?
I hear you. I didn't know if you wanted on the screen. I'm trying to pull them up for you and everyone to see, but I also realize people at home are only staring at this, so I
So, you can move it.
I'm trying to get the video going too.
Right.
Lot of back and forth.
They keep staring. So, the next application, Downtown Coordinator, Community Development, and the amount of 55,000, last year was 35,000. I know this has a backstory.
It does. So, this is a partnership that's gone on between the city and the university in previous year, actually, it's broader than the city and the university. There is a partnership that we're calling In Town now, but we used to call it Reimagine North of Maine. Partnership between the university, the museum, New View Communities, the city, the redevelopment authority, and Health Alliance Hospital, that we are moving to create, well, we don't have a downtown management organization, but this is about branding downtown, managing downtown, encouraging business development, and encouraging visitorship to downtown. So, the downtown coordinator does a couple of different things and we've had this partnership where the university hired the downtown coordinator, paid half the salary and CDBG paid the other half. The CDBG half is used specifically to assist micro enterprise businesses, either through direct technical assistance or through coordinating events that have a benefit to the downtown businesses and those micro enterprises, like organizing event where there would be increased foot traffic to visit the retail space and then ultimately increase sales. They're also, the coordinator is doing a lot of targeted marketing with those businesses. Our downtown coordinator currently has great graphic design skills, so she's using those skills to help those businesses to do more marketing, to improve their, the design elements. So, you know, it could be something like menus, you know, rebranding, those sorts of things. Unfortunately, the university is in a state of flux right now. There's a lot of change that's been happening. They're seeing budget cuts, just like a lot of other areas too. And they're telling us that they do not anticipate being able to fund this position starting July 1. So, as a result, I increased our request, hoping that we don't actually have to take the whole increase, hoping that we can identify some other sources to still split that, that cost and, you know, whether it be city general funds or some other source. I haven't, I haven't identified that source yet though, so I haven't found that source. So, that's why we have this increase.
I realize it was a coordinate, but there was also the person you were, you were mentioning was doing like, setting up the websites and all that was a separate position. Is that person still doing that type of work?
And, well, and I actually, I focused more on the CDBG side, so I didn't really tell you what the university side was paying for. So, that's paying for a lot of event-related activities, but also managing the In Town website. Is that what, is that what you mean when you say the website?
No, well, there was, I can't think of her name. There was an indiv, was it?
Monique.
Monique.
Monique?
Right.
Monique does have graphic design and can do web, web design work as well.
But the position that, well, I guess it's now formally vacant. So, I'm just saying there was more than one position because Monique was doing
Oh, yes.
The other aspect of this, this down, work for downtown and supportive businesses, is that something separate or is that part of this, like, position?
So, I think what you're asking is, there used to be a program, a downtown program manager as well, and that was Joe Ferguson.
Yes.
He left and the university did not replace his
Wasn't that his position?
So, we actually
No.
So, that position was really managing the, some broader projects
Okay.
In downtown and was, had been administering grant funds that came from Mass Development mostly, but those grant funds have, that was a part of our TDI project that, that Mass Development had funded and that ended. We do actually have additional funding from TDI for Creative Cities and that's funding a program manager for Creative Cities, a little bit separate from the downtown business work that In Town was doing. There's a lot of overlap because creative, because the creative economy is a big part of what we're doing in downtown, but that is a separate piece. I'm sorry, I don't want to confuse that.
A thought on this, this aspect, I know it's like billed as downtown coordinator, but if there was less funds and got from a different aspect, it wouldn't be 100% CDBG area
Yeah.
That you could actually do event coordination for the, like, city event coordination, not just downtown coordination. They could expand and do portions of it, just
We could, but in this case, it has to stay focused on the business assistance and event coordination related to that. Because otherwise, so, so these events that are focused on the benefit is really to the citizens, that would, that would be a public service if we were focusing event coordination on the citizens and to the, for the residents' benefit and it wasn't having a positive impact to the businesses. So, you have to walk, we have to think carefully about how projects are eligible when it comes to CDBG, because we know we have that public service cap. We really don't want
No, I understand. I was just that, of all, that where it doesn't have to be 100% per se, that it's like, if you fund, it's like at least half the time can be for that aspect and the other half, because it's not funded by CDBG, can do other work.
Correct. And that person could
Could be 100%. Because if you go too much for CDBG, you're restricted to doing the work in that, this particular area.
Yeah. So, yeah, so this person could
We broaden the role.
Work with micro enterprises outside of downtown.
Yeah, I'm just making, like, broadening the role
With the CDBG.
If the funding is coming also from a different allocation.
Right. With the 100% CDBG funding, it would be, yeah. Or even if it was
Without it.
Oh, without it.
Without it.
Without CDBG, there's a lot more flexibility.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Is that
She's saying funded outside of CDBG.
Right.
Oh.
It's more flexible outside of CDBG because others are restricted
Yeah.
Just to this, because we're just saying it's downtown when other businesses, things could, and other, could benefit from this type of position and, you know, outside of just
So, technically, this, the CDBG could allow for business assistance to be outside of downtown. This is by way of the application limiting itself of downtown. This is by way of the application limiting itself to downtown.
No, no, I, I...
But, but you're, but in general, if there was another funding source, there would just, it would be a lot more flexible for what that was up to.
There's also redundancy with this when it's, when it doesn't involve that planning aspect of downtown. Meaning if, if, if a lot of this is the business assistance because of the category that it's in, we have just had two other applications before this that does do the same thing. The NewViews and the new one that you just proposed. So there's a lot of redundancy with this. If that's the purpose of, if that's what you have to do to fall into this box, to be in this category, it's redundant. It's, it's, I understand why you have it, but the important part, or at least before, I always thought the important part to this was the work that was done on the college's dime that didn't have strings attached to it. Now, I, I think, so when we reinstituted this position, and we talked about it briefly before the meeting, when we reinstituted this position, I think it was Tom's first year here, it was sold by not only community development, but the college as this is block grant just to get started. It will not be block grant funded forever. The college is going to accept half of it, and the city will budget half of it. And it was, it was an argument Tom and I had for the three or four, however many years he was here for, every, three years, whenever, each year, it was an argument of, okay, it's time to get more of this money out of block grant funding. The biggest problem we run into, and I'm sure you know, is every year, the funding is less and less and less. Now, we're, you know, more than half of what we were 15 years ago. It was 1.9, I think, in 25, 2005, something like that. I mean, we're way, light years away from where we used to be. So knowing full well that every year this goes down, which it has for the last 15 or so years, I've been doing it, every year it goes down, you can't keep funding positions in CDBG. It can happen occasionally. It can't be this person's job is funded by block grant. And I'm going to say the same thing to the Board of Health in a few minutes. It just, you cannot keep funding positions with block grant money, because we're down to 900,000. Next thing you know, in another five years, we're going to be at 500,000. You just, you can't do it. So it's, it's something we need to start thinking, I say this every year, but it's something we need to start thinking seriously about, that yes, you can use it temporarily, but people have been saying temporarily for, well, this position five years now, and other positions longer than that.
I, and I, and I understand and I agree with what you're saying. And I will say, we were on a track where we were develop, or we, we still are, we're developing a path for a downtown management organization. And we had developed a, a path to fund that potentially through what's called the DIF. The city's fiscal climate is not one where I think we're going to be able to get a DIF passed as that funding mechanism. I'm sorry, DIF isn't District Improvement Financing, yes, DIF.
I mean, the other...
And, and so, so that, that has been the path that we're going down, but we had to take a step back for that right now, because budgets are starting to retract.
I understand, but the other part to this is, the last three years' budgets, with the exception of what's happening this second, have never been healthier. So...
Oh, absolutely. And I, I'm kind...
So it hasn't happened, so it's not going to happen. So...
I'm a little surprised.
And let's do, do something else with the money.
I, I would hate to see this position be cut now at this stric, we would be going backwards. We rely on this person to do things like book events and acts for Mill Street. They, and one of the things that we've been talking about is doing like Restaurant Week. That would be a great activity and would fit in with, these are the kind of events that could be happening through this, this position, where there would be, it would be an event that would bring people downtown, but there is a direct connection to increasing business assistance. So that kind of technical...
Not saying that there's no value to it, it's just all about the funding.
Oh, no.
And I would, I would love for this position to be independent of CDBG.
Because it's just, it's, it is restricts what they can do, and it's just still funding like another employee position from the very limited funds that are available. And it's, and just, all of it's to help support the community in different categories, but we have to, has to be looked at that way.
And aside from the fact that when you fund these, we, we take, you take a situation where, let's say, let's say we fully fund it with block grant funding for this coming fiscal year. It's fine. Next fiscal year, the best we can do is 5% less or 10% less. Yet employees are going to expect pay to go up 5%. You can't, you, you can't do that. It's not possible. So positions like this can't get pay raises. I don't know how that works, but you just can't. So it, you know, I don't know.
It's nice to, when you start to see some repetitive, that it's a little less each day or not more each year, because you want to see them be able to be sustainable. It's nice, good to get things going.
It'd be a stepping stone.
Stepping stone, and it's not like this is the permanent funding source.
Yeah. And block grant funding's not going to get better.
I'd love to be able to tell you that this would just be a transition year for, to, to find another source of funding, and certainly we would make every effort to do that, but I can't make any promises.
And I know when I say that, I know everyone knows what I'm saying. I, you, you know, you, you've been around it long enough, especially with block grant stuff. You, you know the purpose of what I'm saying. I, I think the reason why I keep saying it is in hopes that the council and the mayor's office understand that these things are all fine and good, but these are extremely temporary. And when we do, I, I don't want to pick on Steve, because you're coming up, but we, when we do, when we do something like code enforcement, which is extremely important, that has to be in the budget. That cannot be in block grant funding, because not only are you taking it away from projects that can't be funded in the city budget, but it's every year, that dollar amount is doing less and less, because their costs are going up, but the block grant money's going down. So you hit a, you hit a point where it doesn't make sense to fund those anymore. So it's just, you, you know, you keep saying it, but I know what's going to happen. We're going to come to a year in about 10 years where there's going to be, you know, layoffs or whatever, and people are going to say, oh, we wish, we saw that their block grant funding was going down. Well, we can show you every year, it's going down. So...
Almost like the free cash. It's like a one-time, you know, you don't want to be sustained from that all the time.
Yeah. So anyway, thank you, Liz.
Well, you all appreciate everyone's efforts.
Yes.
It's all about fiscal...
I certainly hope no one takes it personally. It's not directed at anyone.
All right. Any questions, more comments on that application? We have the next one, Pittsburgh Public Market, Worcester Regional Food Hub, and the requested amount is $100,000.
Good evening.
I'm shorter than I look. My name is Kim Gordon, and I am the manager of the Pittsburgh Public Market. I guess the first question people ask us is, where is that? 35 Main, down the road. The Identity Coffee Company just opened in our building, so we are in that building. And the next question people automatically ask me is, when are you opening? I know that people, especially those that work on the street, have been looking at that building for a long time and wondering when it was going to be open. Very soon. I am there on a daily basis. Construction is really going gangbusters right now on our side, and I anticipate a winter opening. Hopefully, we'll be like right behind Identity Coffee there. Our proposal, what we are specifically asking for money for in year 50, is we would like, we have already done a pilot program here in Pittsburgh of our launching diverse food entrepreneurs program. This is part of the Worcester Regional Food Hub, and we've done these programs before in Worcester. So we're a commercial kitchen, restaurant, space, and grocery. Our 10 entrepreneurs from our pilot program, nine of them are going to be serving you food. Hopefully, you'll be coming by right down the road. So that has been incredibly successful. The demand to be in that class far exceeded what we could host at the time. So what we are looking to do in this year is to do the full robust program up here for 24 entrepreneurs. This is really specifically targeted towards low-income entrepreneurs, of color, women are actually, the pilot program of 10 was all women, just happened to be, and immigrant populations as well. That would be ideally starting in July. We would accept applications, and then through the late summer and into the fall, it would be a two-month program where we really take them from very beginnings. So what, until, hopefully, they'll be ready to open a food business here in Pittsburgh. So yeah, that's what we're looking to do. Hopefully, like I said, targeting this fall so that by Christmas of next year, you'd actually be able to enjoy the food of some of those entrepreneurs.
So you train them, and then they're able to start their business within your space so they have your support?
Right. And so the funding is so, to cover their initial expenses, including like serve safe certification, permits, the educational piece, like I said, a two-month program as well, and then initial startup costs for their businesses. Like I said, our initial cohort of 10, it's all low-income, stuff like that. So their permits, their serve safe, all that kind of stuff was covered, and that's what we're looking to do. They said for 24 would be what we could accommodate with this type of funding.
And that would be like 24, like, you mentioned like July, that would be like in a year or time?
So this coming July.
Yes.
We could start accepting the applications. They said we had a well over 10 applications for the, so I think that, I feel extremely confident that Pittsburgh as a community, you know what I mean, we're probably still going to have to turn people away. We're going to have more than 24 applicants. But, yeah.
Can I ask, so Pittsburgh Public Market, is it a nonprofit?
Yes.
Okay. So the, the, the goal of Worcester Regional Food Hub and the Pittsburgh Public Market was to create a space to be able to train? That, that's the, meaning, what's the purpose of?
Yes. So that is a huge component of what we're trying to do. The way I explain it is like, I like to think of us as a small business incubator. We want to be the place where, like I said, especially low-income women, people of color. We want to create a diverse, a food system that like caters to a diverse population and also like obviously empowers these businesses to get started. We will have the commercial kitchen as well that is available to, you have a food truck, you know, you can come in, a catering business you want to start, as well as wholesale businesses. We actually have already had a small class of eight wholesale interested parties. Like you want to make hot sauce, and you want to sell it in grocery stores. That's a more complicated process than the starting a restaurant, so we're also doing that type of coursework as well, independent of the program that we're discussing here. So people can come in, rent for a low fee. The kitchen, it's exponentially like smaller amount of money to come in and cook at our kitchen than it is to like start your own business. But the goal is, is that people can build up their businesses to the point where I hope that, you know, in a couple of years, I'm gazing out the window here, and I'm seeing a few of the people who started at the Pittsburgh Public Market now moving, especially in the Main Street area, but throughout Pittsburgh, being able to establish brick and mortars.
You existed before 35 Main?
So the, it's a project of the Worcester Regional Food Hub. So we have done this program in Worcester.
Is Worcester Public Market?
No. So we actually...
That's what I was, that's, that's what I was saying. That's a commercial operation.
Right. So we have, we currently have a kitchen that public can rent and all that kind of thing. I mean, we've done this program before. It's at the Greendale People's Church, but we are building another facility at Union Station that is going to be a little bigger than Pittsburgh. But, and that will have kitchen, multiple kitchens as well. So we, and we'll leave the church, and we'll be at Union Station.
Are there, aside from training, is there, is there dining services in 35, other than identity?
So you can walk in the door, and we're going to have, so this is from the initial cohort of 10. We are going to have birra tacos, a couple of different bakers, a Venezuelan baker, as well as like a lovely wedding cake baker, halal chicken, Puerto Rican street food, healthy, there's salads as well. Sorry, but there are salads and juice. And like an anti-candy maker and stuff like that. So you can walk in, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM will be open.
Oh, nice.
And you can come on in, and we'll be there seven days a week. And so you can buy food from them. And they said, I don't have any stalls available right now, because that initial cohort, like I said, the retention has been amazing. So nine out of 10 are going to be serving their food out of like the restaurant portion. And then the other will be using the kitchen. They're just not interested in the, that aspect of the business.
So that, that's separate? So like food trucks can rent?
Yes. And they can also, yep. So, and it's actually like, it's, just to explain it really quickly, it's like a key access system. So they, like, I will have, I already know that like I have one hot sauce vendor who's been cooking out of Worcester, but they're local to here, so they also want to use our kitchen. They're going to be coming in like on the weekend at like 3:00 in the morning quarterly, and just banging out those huge like lots at a time. So that kind of thing. And we'll be working, like I said, independent of this program, but we'll also be doing, working on that wholesale part as well.
Oh, great. I had a similar question earlier versus like, you know, all or nothing, or something would actually be helpful? Like, it's not like you can't operate the program if you don't get a full $100,000.
Right. I mean, so, I mean, you see the budget breakdown and everything else, so any missing piece of the budget, and then we're going to be able to like service less people.
Okay.
Is ultimately how that goes. Yeah.
All right.
Good to hear.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much.
Is there anybody online? Any board member?
I do have one question.
Okay, Peter.
Kim, you said you worked at the Worcester Regional Food Hub?
Yeah, that's like our umbrella organization. And then now, I think, the Pittsburgh Public Market is like our first foray into the north central area. But I think that the reason why we're in Pittsburgh is because of the amazing talent that's up here. And we just think that Pittsburgh really is kind of like the next part of adding the regional to that Worcester Regional Food Hub.
So correct me if I'm wrong, your goal is to, you have approximately 24 applicants?
We would love to have 24 people come through the program, yeah.
Okay. Your goal is to train these individuals to eventually open their own business?
Yeah. It takes them from the beginning through all different aspects. I can actually kind of, we do have a breakdown of like the different weeks and stuff. So some of the things that are covered are basic accounting, menu planning, scaling, kitchen basics, front of house basics, business planning, digital marking, marketing, plans, permits, insurance. So that kind of, that's all different sections of the program that they go through week by week.
Okay. What I'm mainly interested in, Kim, is, I think the program sounds good. What I'm mainly interested in is, what is your success rate at drawing these people into this program? And what, what are the numbers for the people that have actually gone out and opened a business?
Right, absolutely. Well, they said, so we did the pilot program of 10, and like the retention has been the full 10 to actually be opening in the Pittsburgh Public Market and using the kitchen, so starting their businesses. In Worcester, we have 150 vendors going through the kitchen right now. And we have, I don't have an exact number of how many people have established brick and mortars, like coming right out of that, but we have multiple businesses throughout Worcester that have started with these programs and are now like brick and mortars. And actually, in the Worcester Public Market, like I said, which is its own corporation, but the Worcester Public Market is like half of our vendors.
Thanks.
They've come through our program, as well as like throughout the city of Worcester.
Has there ever been an applicant that goes through your program that has ever seen clear to open their own business, their own brick and mortar business?
Have we ever had? Yes, in Worcester, yes. This is going to be the full, the first one in Pittsburgh. So like I said, the, the 10 from the pilot program are all going to be establishing their businesses in this next quarter and opening. They won't be having independent brick and mortars yet, but that is hopefully on its way. But yes, multiple Worcester vendors have gone through the program and are now in brick and mortars.
Can you give the name of the most successful one you've ever had?
You're going to get me in trouble if I name like successful ones. So I mean, like some of the ones that I, so I've also, I came into this job because I worked with a lot of the Worcester Food Hub vendors beforehand. So now I'm like really going to get in trouble if I say who the most successful is. But like I said, if you walk through the Worcester Public Market, for example, we'll just use that. I mean, Touarepa has worked with us, Bree Sweet Treats has worked with us. They've actually just raised money to get their own like van too. So they're going to be doing like traveling stuff. So that's just a couple names. If I keep on naming them, like I said, you're going to get me in trouble, but of who's the most successful. And all those are available online as well. Like we, we have like a long list of our vendors that we've worked with. So I can provide that as well.
Okay.
Like I said, we'll be here for, we might be here even long past 9:00 if I list all of them, but...
Just kind of trying to get a feel for what the mindset is.
Right. And like I said, too, some of them are not brick and mortar, not all of them are going to be opening brick and mortars and stuff too. Like, for example, we work with some of the big vendors that we have doing wholesale in Worcester are like Stretches Pickles, Minuteman Kettle Corn. So... So like some of the stuff that you've seen in grocery stores, Decimation Hot Sauce, like I said, Bali Marl is actually gonna be coming up here to doing some work, which we're excited about to have them in the Fitchburg area.
So some are not all front-facing to the public, some of them are like, they make their, like wholesale and sell off?
Yes, and we also, like I said, that's not, we, this will be in addition to this class, and this is more focused on people looking to open restaurant spaces, but we also have that aspect to the food hub.
Great, definitely value there, restaurant business is so hard.
Yeah.
So ensure that there's some support with some of these businesses is pretty integral.
Yeah, and especially to the funding, a lot of them just, there's a lot of them that, they have, like I said, they have the talent, they don't have this capital to even get like the permits and stuff, but when we get it in their hands, it's unbelievable the success you can see. Because like I said, they're gonna knock your socks off, I'm excited for y'all to try their food.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Comment, all right. That is that category, and we are on to, there's five proposals totaling $335,000. And we're on to rehabilitation and preservation. Hey, two more sections left. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to present tonight. My name is Megan Donahue, and I'm the Executive Director of the Fitchburg Redevelopment Authority. We're asking for $150,000 in funding to go to our grant programs, two of which have seen great success, and one we are in the process of creating, excuse me. The two existing grants consist of the Main Street Housing Grant, which you've probably heard of, which provides property owners and/or developers $5,000 per unit for revitalizing upper-story housing along Main Street for up to 10 units. This program has been around since 2013 and has seen an uptick consistent with the revitalization efforts along Main Street in recent years. The second is our design grant program, which provides reimbursements of up to $2,000 for any sort of technical drawings, architectural, mechanical, anything like that. This program was implemented in December of 2022 and has been used by business owners who didn't factor such a need in their business plan, or property owners who need upgrades, and developers who just need help bridging their financing. This program is for commercial entities throughout the urban renewal district. And third, which is still in development, is going to provide reimbursements for energy upgrades in commercial areas within our urban renewal districts such as mini splits, LED lighting, heat pumps, things like that. As with our design grant program, we intend to make this a district-wide and eventually make that Main Street Housing Grant Program district-wide as well. Our grants align with the principles of the CDBG program, as well as our own urban renewal plan to remove slum and blight by helping in a creative way to activate storefronts and rehabilitate upper-story housing, all within our urban renewal district, which encompasses the downtown. Actually, you just approved that a couple of years ago for us, so thank you. Why ask for funding now when we've been funding our programs all along? First, we have seen quite an uptick in grant applications during my five years with the FRA, and we would like to help as many applicants as possible. Second, our budget is not part of the cities, and we are limited financially as our revenue comes from our tenants, tenants' rent at 166 Boulder Drive and the occasional sale of our properties. Also, if we're lucky, we'll win a grant here and there from the state or other organizations. But with that said, we are limited financially, especially because the majority of our budget goes back into maintaining our properties, which as we all know, we've seen an escalation in costs due to materials and contractor fees. So with the CDBG funding, the FRA will be able to cast a wider net to help redevelop the downtown. And that's it, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from any board members? Anyone from the public? Live, virtual? Nope?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Megan. We have the next application, Critical Home Repair, Habitat for Humanity of North Central Mass, and the amount, $30,000 request last year's awarded amount was $20,000. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Reed, Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity, North Central Massachusetts. And as you said, our request this year is for $30,000 for our Critical Home Repair Program. Critical Home Repair is for homeowners in the city in existing affordable homes who don't have the funds to repair their homes to keep them in good shape. We generally serve homeowners earning less than 60% of area median income, and several of our homeowners are lower than that, they're less than 30% of area median income. And we use volunteer labor to keep the costs very low, so we can do more repairs for less money. We have been seeing a great increase in demand. This year, we've already completed two, and we used partial funding from CDBG because they were both fairly large, and we have four more in the pipeline for this year, and our goal was to serve four families this year. Last year, we had six requests into our office from the city for Critical Home Repair. This year, we've already had 17. We do roof repairs, accessibility repairs, modifications, additions, and it addresses the city's need for rehab of low and moderate income housing. And so with $30,000, we expect to be able to help six to eight homeowners to stay safely in their homes.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions online? Any board member?
From, from what I've heard, the dollar-for-dollar return on this is very good as far as what it ends up doing for some people that can't do things to their house, so it's appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's been building really quickly, over the 10 years we've done this, we've now done 156 repairs in all our 30 cities and towns.
It's been good to be able to keep people in their home.
Yeah, and we have a good affordable housing stock, so we need to maintain it.
Appreciate.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time this evening. Council of Bochum.
I don't want you to think I'm soft here.
Here you go. Stand and deliver.
I'll vote for her. She gave me her phone number, I think she's kind of sorry now that she gave it to me. She wasn't the person that-
He likes to call on weekends, just like you know. Sorry, Counselor.
That's okay. There was a person in my ward that needed her assistance, and they put on a new roof on that Proudie's house, because the lady was a handicapped person, and if, she probably wouldn't be living there today, it was leaking pretty bad. So I want to say thank you, because I drove by the house and did a nice job. Yeah, so it's well worth the program, I think this is one of the, one of the good programs. I'm not saying that to all of them, they got big question marks, they girls saw me down there putting a question mark on them. This one here is a very good program for the people, for the residents of Fitchburg, especially elderly, where we have a high case of elderly and a lot of them in their homes. So if they know about the program, they can get help, because a lot of them don't have a lot of money. So I appreciate it, and I hope we support this wholeheartedly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you don't get the wrong idea, I want to say publicly, I enjoy our conversations.
Yes.
You ask good questions. Our next application is Code Enforcement, Board of Health, Steve, Mr. Curry. $111,043 request, award amount last year $96,000.
Just to comment on, on the, I have worked with the administration for the last five or six years, as well as the finance team. It has been a few years, about four years ago, I believe it was double that amount. So we were very dependent on CDBG to staff the housing division. I'll continue to work with the new administration, as well as the finance team, and it is certainly our goal to wean off the dependency for CDBG. It has been for five or six years now, so I just, I just want to throw that out.
I know when it comes to budgets, it's not the department heads that are the ones that are making it go here. It goes here because it can't go elsewhere, so I appreciate it.
Right. Very quickly, our CDGB inspector will continue to provide inspections in the target area. He did a couple of hundred last, in calendar year 2023. About 400 dwellings were inspected in the, in the area for slum, all those conditions of slum and blight. Our inspector works very closely with the AG's office, as I've mentioned before, as far as the vacant, abandoned and vacancy program through the AG's office, as well as our local legal team. We will be working very closely with the new vacant building registry that the council just adopted. This inspector will be able to address those commercial buildings that are in the target area as well, not just the residential properties, which might be helpful in, in some areas of the cities to, to improve blight. And also, the adoption of 40U by the council will hopefully provide a new and quicker mechanism for enforcement with tickets, and hopefully we can produce a little better revenue through the municipal hearing officer than we could through housing court. But basically, it funds one position, an inspector, and part of a, or halftime clerk, which is different from about five years ago, it used to be two inspectors. Yep. We're getting there.
Keep, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
It's not, it certainly didn't want it to come off as, I don't think the positions are important. Positions are incredibly important.
I can't believe, this is my 16th time standing in front of, I can't believe I've been able to do that for 16 years. So I appreciate that.
That's been that long?
And I know the day is coming when it's not gonna happen, or it's gonna be greatly reduced.
Don't, don't age me like that.
I remember Jeff Jersey being here, so it just shows you, shows you the dates we've had.
Thank you.
Well, you're welcome. Any question, comments? I guess I was wondering at some point whether or not there was gonna be like legal assistance or something involved with requests for the Board of Health.
So, so I do have a question about the category, and I, I'm fairly certain I said this last year, and it's very important for next year. You still should apply for demo, even if we fund nothing, it leaves us the chance to be able to fund it. If we don't put in a category for funding, you can't go back and add it after the fact. So we find out between when you start block grant funding, applications in November, or whenever it is, to when we do the application approvals next month, that a property needs to get taken down. We now cannot apply for it. But just put demo in there, put, request amount, you know, a billion dollars, put $1, it doesn't matter. Put it in there, so that if we end up, oh shoot, we gotta fund this demo, we gotta fit it in with block grant funding, at least the category's there. We've done years, we've done many years in the past, we funded $0 with demo, but it's been in the packet. So it needs to be in the packet in case there's, you know, again, I, it goes down every year, so I know we had, what, three or four years ago, we had a huge demo fund, we had almost $200,000. $200,000, and the following year, we had like 80 or 90, or whatever it was. And then we were playing catch-up, because we did so many of them, it was taking so long to do them. But now, even though we might not have money, it should still be applied for in the event we need it, or in the event it doesn't fall under any other buckets, so.
We, you're correct, we should be. We do have demo from, we have $58,000 from CDBG demo from year 49.
Okay.
We haven't spent yet, and then, and-
Which must be 48, because we didn't fund it last year.
We did fund it last year.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
I didn't think demo was in there last year.
And there's, there's one other older year that we're still paying on.
But if it's not here, can, you can't reprogram it to it, right?
That, that's correct, I mean, you know, yeah, we can't, we can't add to it now. We're not gonna have any new year 50 demo money, because we didn't apply for it.
Well, I am glad to hear that there's, there's a difference, my memory apparently is failing me. I thought we didn't do any last year, maybe it was a couple of years ago.
It was the year before that we didn't do any, so we did, we had like a really robust demo project, and I think the, we, we took care of a lot of projects there and didn't have the appetite to go after demo, or to, to do another big round of demo. But, but your comment is well timed, because we just had a conversation about needing to take down a building, or potentially take down a building that may be unsafe, and we'll be looking-
Just a mental note, just put it in there, and like I said, even if there's nothing planned, it, you know, you can put a ballpark number on there, and if we don't fund it, we don't fund it. It doesn't, it doesn't hurt, but you can't add it after the fact, so.
I appreciate that comment.
And similarly, when we, and I think, taken to, like last year too, about like parks and things where there's so many like separate programs, it's like, to put it together as like this, these are the projects for parks versus it being two separate.
Which is what we did this year, right? We have one parks line item.
Yeah, so multiple projects within this, that item.
So I-
Leave the last.
You want to do the-
Administration, well, I got to do the finish.
Yeah.
So for that application, we have the last category, Administration, for which we have the project, CDB Administration, Community Development, and the requested amount of $210,000, with a last year award of $183, 367, and we know that's a cap at 20%, so.
Our request is optimistic, hoping that we get more in CDBG than we are likely to get, but, but obviously-
But last year's was less.
Yes.
So probably less than that.
We would certainly cap it, we would not be able to fund more than 20% of whatever the entitlement is. But, but we do need the funds to actually run the, this program.
I, I, obviously, the, I know we have that conversation every year, and it's, it is what it is. But I did have a question about reprogram funds, and I know, obviously, mid-year, they can't really be calculated accurately, because you're, especially now, we're still, well, not even, only halfway through the program year. But I noticed in the packet, because of the revolving loan funds, you had estimated generation, revenue generation from those categories for next year, 24, 25. We must have kind of, I don't want to say an idea, but, I mean, are we talking 5,000, or are we talking 100,000?
Are you, you're talking about reprogram funds?
Yeah.
So we actually-
I know we have, I can't, I don't have the exact number.
Oh, again, not an exact number, is it, my question is-
In tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands?
Is it a sizable number, is my question?
My guess is 40, 45, something like that.
Well, if, we do, we're in the process of trying to reprogram, or we, we want to reprogram, or we need to reprogram an activity that was budgeted 100,000. And we, but we still, there was a, a small amount of funding that was spent on testing for that activity, and that we need to identify another source to change that charge to, so that we can then reprogram this. This is $100,000, it's the police, police's accessibility, their parking, their accessible parking. It was going to be, that money was going to go into an entire, was going in to, to go into the accessible parking element of a police building redesign. Doesn't look like it's going to happen anytime soon, we can't just keep that money sitting out there, so we do need to reprogram that. But to, to speak to the broader theme, we generally will reprogram everything that's more than a year old. So we're in year 49, so anything that we might have left that we know is not gonna get spent from year 48 or earlier is, is usually what we're reprogramming. We're not trying to reprogram anything that's in the current program year, because that's, that's problematic. So we're always gonna be a year behind in what maybe could be, you know, might not get spent.
Was, do we have anything from '47 or prior that's outstanding?
Well, and I think that police activity, the, the police accessible parking, it does fall into that earlier category, and then we also, we have, this is sort of new to us now to potentially be able to program in. We have a housing revolving loan fund, we don't have a housing rehab program anymore. So we have a housing revolving loan fund that is receiving payments from prior loans when we did have that program, that potentially could fund Habitat's Critical Home Repair.
But we've had those programs before, we had the homeowner show opportunity program for years.
Right, so we were always managing that internally, and that revolving loan fund would just continue to fund the operations. But now that we don't have our own program, that funding could be programmed in that revolving, the money that's currently already there, we wouldn't want to program money that we haven't received yet, but money that's already sitting in that revolving loan fund could potentially be programmed specifically for housing rehab-type activities. So that, it is very limited, so we have one application that could probably fall into that category, but that does free up potentially entitlement money if we wanted to, if you ultimately recommended funding the Habitat program. ultimately recommended funding the Habitat program, we could use it, we could do that from the revolving loan fund. And then that entitlement could be, go to other things.
But, but to answer your question, Paul, we do have some other projects that we are closing out this year, so we should be able to reprogram outside of those.
Yeah. And obviously, I know, I've done this enough, I know a lot of it we don't even hear about before we get our, our final recommendations. I know you do your best to ballpark it, but I know a lot of it comes after these approvals, and that's fine. I'm just trying to figure out if there's any sort of sizable number to get close to last year. It's, I mean, I, you know, I can already tell, you know, some of these things are non-starters just because of how big the numbers are. They're just not possible, so.
My hope is to have those numbers to you before we go to the next meeting, so we're really close. I just haven't completed them.
Yes, that'd be great.
Everybody's diligence efforts are very well appreciated. It's always a pleasure to do this program. I know it's like, it's like a lot of effort, but it's just.
One more quick question. You have $950 in prior year program income. Such a small number. What, what is that?
Well, that's, so that's specific to the, to the code enforcement from last year. So that doesn't include, yeah, so specific to that program.
Okay. All right.
That being said, are there any further questions or comments from the board members? Appreciate everybody's participation this evening. Fantastic.
Make a motion to adjourn.
And in the closing, motion's been made with a second to close. I guess all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those, all right.
Aye.